Good morning, Board members. If we can please start gathering to sit down and begin our work session. We're about five minutes late. All right, School Board members. Good to see everybody here for our work session today. Today is August 24th, and we will be discussing the opening of schools update with final budget review year end, and then we'll be talking about ESER funds. Ms. Melanie Marin and I will be managing the work sessions today. So I will actually call upon Dr. Braybrand to start our first agenda, item 1.02, the opening of schools update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nat Kofax. Good morning, everybody. It's a brand-new school year, and this is our first work session of the new year-after-year intercession break. We hope you guys had a wonderful break and got a chance to relax and recharge, and we did too, but also got busy preparing for returning to school. And one of the things we did just before we get to our end of the year, and ESER, we're really talking about money today in this work session, but we wanted to give you a little preview of returning to school. This is our second day of school. You'll get our full annual review next month at our annual opening of schools report, but we knew there was so much interest in returning to school that we wanted to give you a little snapshot as we get started. So I don't know, Ms. Tolan, do you have a question before I go ahead?
No.
Oh, I see. So here's the opening of schools preview. I'm going to go through it quite a clip, and if there are a couple of quick questions, great, but again, we'll have a full report and full review in another month, but we definitely wanted to give this board an update after intercession on all things of our opening of schools returning strong. So we welcome back our students. Yesterday was our first day. A hundred percent of our schools have opened for five days of in-person instruction. I, along with members of the leadership team, and of course, all of you were out in schools yesterday.
Dr. Braybrand, excuse me.
Yeah.
I have two board members that would like to speak.
No, no, I'll just say going after he's done.
Oh.
If there's some questions.
Oh, all right. I'm getting that list ready. Thank you. We barely got a breath out. All right.
Look at the eager, the eagerness, right? Ninety-nine point five percent of our students are back in person. Getting to see the joy of them returning yesterday was great. Seven thousand bus routes were completed yesterday morning to deliver students the first day of school, and I want you to know while we'll be talking later today, when we get to our ESER funds, about how we can continue to support our amazing bus drivers, less than fourteen routes out of seven thousand were more than thirty minutes late. We did have a few delays yesterday, but fourteen out of seven thousand, that's two-tenths of a percent outstanding work from our transportation team. Our students are back. We're so excited, and so we're going to have a little preview today, and again, a full annual report September 23rd at our annual School Board opening of schools report. So as we welcome back students this fall, our focus is on what we call the AAA, affirming, assessing, and advancing. We talked about it at our leadership conference. It's really an equity framework to help us affirm, assess, and advance our work this year in Fairfax County. And of course, we're going to start this work by focusing on relationships. We need to know who students are, and these are pictures of students on the first day, and it's really about reconnecting and building community in our schools and classrooms. It's so critical to have these relationships built, and building those relationships are an amazing group of staff. So if we can go to slide number three, we had twenty-three hundred new staff members to FCPS this year, and they experienced their first day of school in our division, including fifteen hundred new teachers. All of them are excited to join the FCPS team, and these are the latest numbers. Of course, they may change in a month, but as of today, those are the best numbers we have. Throughout the month of August, of course, we prepared for our students and staff. We had great beginnings, open houses, new student orientations, technology distribution, and just chances for family to reconnect. So I want to go over a couple of quick things around the opening of schools. First, the big nugget, if we can go to the next slide, is universal free breakfast and lunch for all of our students. All students are eligible this year for no-cost breakfast and no-cost lunch. This is continued work by USDA at the federal government level to really support meals for our kids during the pandemic, and hot lunches are currently offered at all of our comprehensive elementary, middle, and high schools. Super excited to have hot lunches back. Meal distributions will continue for students who are attending virtually and for community members still impacted by the pandemic, and we'll have meal distribution at limited sites once a week. If we can go to the next slide, I want you to know, of course, as we open this year, we know we're excited, we're joyful, but we know there is still some anxiety as we look around the country about COVID and particularly the spread of the Delta variant. I did want you to know, and we know, that many of our families remain concerned about that and the increases across the country. What I wanted to do real quick is let you know, this is our data from Fairfax County, and we've been working closely with the Health Department frankly over the whole summer to monitor our local data and make sure we have the best thinking of our health experts to ensure our students are safe. Last week, I hosted a town hall with Dr. Benjamin Schwartz, our medical epidemiologist director, and he shared some of the local health data, which I'm sharing with you here, and shared it with the community again last week. But this is the blue graph showing the COVID cases in Fairfax County, that they have been on the rise since June and early July, and you can see really back over the year how high they were. They went down to almost no transmission, and they have ticked back up. That's the bar graph, and then you can see the top bar graph above is the distribution of tracking the variant of COVID, and you can see that that, and I'm not a good color guy to say it, I would call it light orange, represents the growing, growing percentage of COVID being with the Delta variant. We're going to continue to partner with the Health Department to do the layered prevention strategies that we know kept COVID transmission low in schools last year and can keep COVID transmission low this year, and we're going to continue to redouble our commitment to vaccination, which is the leading public prevention strategy to end the COVID-19 pandemic. I want to talk a little bit about vaccinations and what we have done, so you all can see, they do make a difference. Unvaccinated people develop COVID at a rate twelve and a half times higher than fully vaccinated, and unvaccinated people develop COVID at a rate two and a half times higher than partially vaccinated. So the bottom line is vaccinations work, and we need to continue to work. If you look over on the left side, the vaccination status, you can see that the orange bar is the unvaccinated, and you hear our health authorities nationally talking about it being a pandemic of the unvaccinated. Now, you can see those numbers really rose over the summer. Partially vaccinated is that bluer, lighter blue. It has gone up, but at a much lower steep curve, and again, fully vaccinated has only gone up a little bit, and you can see now actually is beginning to decline, and so we're going to continue to track those numbers very carefully. The VDH is updating their website with the latest vaccination information, the latest COVID transmission information, and will continue to link our website to their work. Let me go to the next slide real quick, just to also let you know, well, what does this mean, Scott or Dr. Braybrand for Fairfax County? Look at the work we've done since school ended, and even school ended, as you remember, with school vaccination clinics in many of our schools. Twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds, sixty-three percent are fully vaccinated. That's up almost twenty-six percentage points since July. Almost seventy-seven percent have had that first dose. They've just got to get the second one. Sixteen-and-seventeen-year-olds, seventy-five percent are fully vaccinated. Eighty-five point seven percent have had the first dose. Again, those are up ten points and almost six points since July. We have one of the most robust, working with our Health Department and community, one of the most robust vaccination outputs in this country, and I'm very proud of our partnership with the Health Department and with the county, and we're going to continue to do everything we can to get every single child vaccinated in our school system. For the adults, you might want to just see the adults. I know that's an interest. If we can go to the next slide real quick, at least one dose in Fairfax County, the adult rate is at almost seventy-eight percent, and you can see that's almost over ten points higher than in the rest of Virginia. And again, fully vaccinated were just now over the seventy percent for adults eighteen-plus. So that's good work, and we know that we still have more to do. In fact, let's talk about the more to do. If we go to the next slide, COVID vaccination access, vaccination mandate, and testing updates. We continue our vaccination efforts through the partnership with the Health Department, and we have a pending memorandum of understanding to provide additional vaccination efforts through a third party. We want to be ready when that vaccination age is lowered for younger students. And I want to say personally and as superintendent that I urge, just like the American Academy of Pediatricians has done, I urge the FDA to safely but rapidly as possible approve lowering the age from twelve to five. We need the vaccination for our youngest kids to continue to keep our schools open throughout this school year and forevermore. It's critically important, and we need to have that happen. I know that every parent and every superintendent wants to see that happen as safely as possible and as quickly as possible. I also shared with you all last week and our community, vaccination is the way out of the pandemic, and we need to now begin to move more even aggressively around that. We are going to be implementing a vaccination mandate for employees, just like the federal government, just like the state government, and just like many school districts around our region in the country, and we'll be providing additional information really just in the days ahead around that information for employees who will need to show proof of vaccination or submit to routine testing, and there'll be more updates coming very, very shortly. This has been moving rapidly, and we need to continue to move rapidly to be there to provide an additional proven safety mitigation strategy for our schools, and that means having our staff vaccinated or being tested routinely. More to come there. We are utilizing layered mitigation strategies to keep our schools safe. We had did before the governor, as you already know, a universal masking indoors. That includes our schools and offices. We're continuing to do the daily health assessment, hand washing and respiratory etiquette, physical distancing to the greatest extent possible, and of course, I know there's been a lot of conversation among our community about, yes, doing everything we can to utilize outdoor cafeteria spaces and use outdoor classrooms when feasible. We've got over two hundred tents that are either in place or on the way over the next several days, and very, very excited to continue to do everything we can to support outdoor instruction and outdoor dining. Some other mitigation strategies we want to mention to you again, if you go to the next slide, is cleaning and ventilation, continuing to clean high-touch surfaces, bus cleaning after the morning runs and evening runs, sufficient air ventilation in our schools and offices, the MIR thirteen filter upgrades, and Mr. Plannenberg did a great job of sharing that at the community town hall last week. We've purchased portable air purifiers with HEPA filters to supplement where needed. We got the International Well Building Institute rating for all facilities, and we have twenty-five million dollars of additional HVAC enhancements that are allocated that we're busy beginning to do those enhancements in our system. Of course, contact tracing through the Fairfax County Health Department continues, and we continue to have a great partnership with them, and we will continue to have safety teams this year, and we're actually using a third party that worked with Loudoun County last year that we're bringing in so that we can redirect our school personnel to their existing jobs and get a outside third party to oversee through observation reports our work at these strategies. Lunchtime health and safety is the next slide, and again, as I mentioned, this is an area that we know many families and board members have asked about. We're committed to safety and health during lunch and want to make sure that when kids are not eating, that they are wearing their mask, even during lunchtime, so they're required to wear their mask when they're not actively eating or drinking, and certainly through the serving line as well. Lunch may look, the situation may look a little different in each school because of facility design, but the structure, we're committed to making sure that it works well and safely at every school. Again, I've talked a little bit about that already. I don't think we need to say more there, except that I do want you to know that we did communicate to schools, our elementary schools, where we know we have the unvaccinated students, that elementary kids will begin this year and probably throughout the year unless otherwise directed, we will have assigned seating in the cafeteria to minimize close contacts when kids are at lunch. We'll continue to clean the cafeteria thoroughly and regularly, and of course, encouraging kids before and after to sanitize their hands. First-day staffing updates, I want to share a little bit about that. Ninety-nine point eight percent of our teaching positions are filled. We do have one hundred and eighty-three vacancies out of over fifteen thousand positions. Our greatest area continues to be special ed, but thank you for supporting, and again, you'll be approving more formally, but you shared your support for our special ed teachers and giving them an additional thirty minutes on their contract this year and next year because of the labor shortage that we have seen and the additional work they have to do IDEA requirements in the middle of this pandemic. We do have a acute shortage of bus drivers as we are seeing nationally and statewide. Eighty-six percent of our bus driver positions are filled, and we're going to be talking about what we can do to ameliorate that later with you all today, and we're doing ongoing efforts to identify outstanding candidates. I do want to thank very much our HR team and our transportation team, HR led by Sean, and our facilities and transportation led by Jeff, just amazing work over the last several weeks, nights, weekends, Sunday mornings, Sunday nights, Saturday mornings, Saturday nights, just in an unbelievable twenty-four-seven effort to get us to where we are. We do believe what we're going to share, as I shared, that some hiring incentives around our bus drivers that we'll share with you later today will help us boost our applicants and eliminate the need for impacts in transportation. So we'll continue to be keeping you abreast of that. Let me show you also just virtual programming. Four hundred kids we're serving in K-12 who have an individual health or medical need related to COVID-19 that requires them to access instruction virtually. This is in alignment with the CDC guidance to provide virtual instruction for those students with those documented health and medical needs. We've got about four hundred in. We have worked through almost all of the course and staffing issues around that. Wonderful job by Doug Tyson, who's leading that on our leadership team, along with Freda Miko, and again, Jen Glazer and Marcy Neal have helped tremendously as well. Some enrollment courses that we're working on are being offered through the FCPS online campus or Virtual Virginia. This is a little background, too. On the kids that we're serving, you can see with an equity lens, we're serving some of our most vulnerable kids. Forty-two percent of the kids being served are students with disabilities. Twenty-one percent are English learners. Thirty-eight percent are free and reduced lunch. All of those are higher than division numbers. If we can go to the next slide, technology, I want you to know this. We are, of course, assigning devices by the end of this week to every student, but on the first day of school, Fairfax County has already put ninety-one thousand devices in the hands of students on day one, and I want to thank Gotham Sethi and his amazing team. We've had T-specs. We've also had S-bits supporting, really getting the distribution of those devices out. Tremendous job. We're continuing to have our multilingual parent help desk. I think we took over four hundred parent calls already in the last two weeks. That came out of the pandemic, that we knew we needed to give additional parent support, and we're super, super excited. We've given our schools additional Zoom licenses for large, large abilities to hold large group virtual events, whether it will be a back-to-school night or a ninth grade, rising ninth grade, a rising tenth grade seminar. We've really turned that on, not just for the division level, but for all of our schools, and I want to thank Mr. Sethi for his amazing work to make that happen. Want to just finalize, again, right on this, too, that we're using Zoom and Schoologee this year. Blackboard is no longer part of our infrastructure for IT, and I wanted to thank all the work we've done to train up our teachers and our staff on using both the Zoom and the Schoologee technology. Schoologee was a pilot last year in several schools. Now it's in every school, and Zoom is now our de facto web conferencing product. I want to mention just also very quickly, the student support during pause, quarantine, or isolation. This is another thing that we know we're having questions about from our community. We are implementing layered prevention strategies to minimize COVID in our schools, but we have to be prepared for situations where students may be required to pause in order to complete contact tracing or be required to quarantine because they were identified as a close contact, or even to isolate if they were found to have been COVID-positive themselves. We'll continue to provide students with instruction when they're directed by the Health Department to pause, quarantine, or isolate, and asynchronous assignments will be provided when individual students or small groups of students are out. If an entire class is paused, quarantined, or isolated, an entire class, not just an individual kid or a couple of kids, the class will continue with instruction, but it will actually be synchronous. We will provide synchronous if an entire class is to pause. We hope to keep these numbers very low. We know we've seen some issues about schools having to close school, school districts having to close an individual class or school, but I would like to remind this board and our community that our vaccination rates are among the highest in the country, and that even in Virginia right now, among COVID transmission, it is high in every part of Virginia with the exception of two localities. Fairfax County and Alexandria are actually at one notch lower in substantial, but not high transmission, and I believe even that data in our community speaks to our high vaccination rates. Staff support during, we've talked about students, but staff support during quarantine of a fully vaccinated employee is directed by the Health Department or treating a medical provider to quarantine due to symptomatic COVID infection. We will be offering fully vaccinated employees an option to telework, and they'll be expected to telework as long as they're well enough to complete their assigned duties and if deemed appropriate by the supervisor. Fully vaccinated employees who are not well enough to work during the quarantine period may access up to ten days of paid quarantine leave, so we are going to provide that benefit for our vaccinated employees if employees are, again, having a COVID infection and need to quarantine. But again, as I said, we're super excited to be back for five days of in-person instruction. Ninety-nine point five percent of our students are back. We had a young lady, I was at Mount Vernon High School to begin the day yesterday, and you may have seen some of the press coverage of all of us out in schools, and I just watched it back today saying, "I belong back in school." Amazing student, the joy, the excitement, I'm ready to be back, I'm excited to be back. Our students belong in our schools, and we want to create a culture of belonging, a caring culture, and we can and will make this a great school year. I know the pandemic has been almost the metaphor of light at the end of the tunnel, and it's felt for some like a long tunnel, that we were out of the tunnel at the end of last school year, and we still feel like we're a little bit in the tunnel, but we are close to exit, and with strong vaccination, with strong masking, with continued use and fidelity of our mitigation strategies, we can and will not just return strong, but stay strong this school year. Thank you all very much, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and I see we have our staff at the front of the table as well. For our School Board members, we will be following our typical process of three minutes for first go-round of questions with two minutes for two-minute go-backs. I ask, I do have you, Ms. McLaughlin is our first, but I just ask people, I think it is easier than trying to catch my attentions, for everybody to put up their nameplate when they do want to speak. So I have Ms. McLaughlin followed by Ms. Omech.
Hi, how are you, Ms. McLaughlin?
Very good, thank you.
Good to see you.
I do share your excitement about all the hard work that our staff have done to welcome our kids back to school, but I wanted to bring to your attention and my colleagues, yesterday for the first day of school was not so joyful for one of our sports teams, and I think other colleagues have it in their magistrateal districts too. So I didn't visit the school that I was invited to. Instead, I spent the day working with your staff at central office, and I want to bring to your attention, I think we've really got to get this tight and figured out, because as you noted, our students belong in school, and we really do want them in school, but we've got to figure out a faster way to have the Health Department and our system identify students who are already vaccinated, because based on CDC guidelines and state and local health guidelines, students who are vaccinated, students who do have a mask on, are not required to have to isolate or quarantine and be out of school, and so bringing them back in for those students and for their families who emailed me and the school officials, there was a lot of sadness for missing that first day of school. So I want to flag that, and we want to compliment Bill Curran and Mark Greenfelder. So I want to flag that, and we want to compliment Bill Curran and Mark Greenfelder and Michelle Lloyd, who all were very responsive in emails and phone calls. Secondly, I do think that this is going to go larger than our sports teams. This is going to go for all of our students. So I urge you, again, to work as quickly as possible to figure out how we can, I think our families, many of them who vaccinated, their children who are of age, want you to have that information. They want to know, how quickly can we make sure the kids get back in? So I think those are the things that have me most concerned, and I think that we've got to get on that as quickly as possible. And then the other thing is that I do want to just make sure that when we talk about the devices and, you know, the asynchronous of students go out, I do think that we need to rethink the policy that if it's a few students go out, they go async. If there's anything we've learned and we already do it for students with health conditions, I'm not asking teachers to do concurrent teaching. I'm asking them to just continue teaching as if the students are sitting in front of them, but allowing students to just be able to zoom into the classroom and just listen is very different than being completely locked out of the class. So I think that's something that we need to look into. We should talk with our teacher associations, but if this is about kids, there is no harm in letting kids listen in at a minimum. And it worries me to think about kids being out of school up to fourteen days. So those were my primary things I wanted to bring to your attention.
I'll just say real briefly, we definitely had a meeting today. We had an early morning meeting, a stand-up about the situation at Woodson, some other schools with sports. We do need to make it quicker. We have a lot of kids vaccinated. How do we get that information in the Health Department so that we're not just waiting for the Health Department to go through just numbers and numbers of kids? Because these teams, some of our teams are so large. So I'll have more to share soon. We had a meeting this morning. We were, this is all real time. Even this, to have this presentation was an ad, just so you all have a chance to do it, and we'll come up with some solutions there. Certainly willing to listen. I think we do have to be very careful after our experience last year with concurrent, and this board gave me clear feedback about concurrent, that it's a slippery slope. We have to explore the issue about how just watching becomes, I want the same concurrent that everybody else has. So I think I'm certainly willing to have it. I don't think we can decide it, of course, today, and I'm not saying that you were saying that, but I think it will require some more engagement, as you said, with our teacher associations and others, but I do worry about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. I never said concurrent.
No, no, no. I know.
All right. Thank you.
I know, I didn't say you did. I didn't say you did.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Omech followed by Dr. Anderson.
Yeah, thank you. To start, a huge thank you to all our staff for their hard work pulling this off. I know we had a great first day in the Omech household from orientation all the way through today, so just want to start off by thanking you all for the hard work over the summer, and that's going to continue, I'm sure. First, short term and then long term, because I know the conversation's going to continue, so hopefully to anticipate some of what's coming. I am curious about what the follow-up has been since we required the vaccine for staff just a few days ago. What have we heard and what's the reaction been?
I have had, my mailbox has been flowing with thank you, thank you, thank you from our staff. I have received no negative emails from our staff. Many of you may know that our teacher associations, and we have been in weekly communication with them, actually publicly at the national level, and I think even more locally, have both and did both call even prior to me making the announcement for the mandatory testing. This is the way out of this pandemic and its impact on schools, and we are prepared to move very rapidly to get this implemented as soon as possible in a matter of just a few weeks. So we'll have more information for you all very soon. Mr. Smith, Dr. Boyd and the team, Sean are hard at work, and we're going to have this in as rapidly as possible. And I applaud, too, that I see our Fairfax County, and we were collaborating with them. Our employees in Fairfax County will also be doing this, but it's critically important to do it for our parents and staff to have another level of reassurance for vaccination.
Yeah, no, I've heard similar public input. I'm curious from HR's perspective if that's impacted anything.
To date, I haven't received any feedback other than the positive feedback that Dr. Braybrand's received. Certainly, as we, the plan takes further form, we may get some additional input from employee associations and individual employees, but to date-
Staffing-wise, that hasn't affected anything measurably?
Very positive response.
Okay, because we already have a shortage in many areas, so I just wanted to-
No, listen, let's just be candid. I'm surprised, but I think we, I think a moment has happened in the last week or two around this whole issue of vaccination mandates, not just here locally, but around the country. And I think larger and larger amounts of our public and our staff understand, no one wants to continue on a groundhog day of the pandemic in our schools, and now it's time to step up and do the right thing for kids, and that's to get every staff member vaccinated or submit to routine testing. And I think we're going to see this accelerate, frankly, across, but I'm not, Sean and I are giving you the God's honest truth, not a single email of complaint. This is overwhelmingly the right thing to do, and we look forward to implementing it well and quickly in FCPS.
Great, thank you. Next, short-term concern regarding mitigation strategies, you mentioned it when going over Slide Five, when it comes to social distancing in particular, are we letting go of that commitment or where are we? I'd like for us to just be very clear and honest from the get-go here with overcrowding situation, the cafeterias, we've heard plenty of complaints, right, about the situation? So I'd love to hear clearly where we are on that.
Sure. We were very clear at the beginning of the year, returning ninety-nine point five percent of kids, we would, we'd social distance where possible and practicable, but that social distancing at six feet or even at three feet, as the CDC ultimately recommended last spring, just wasn't going to be possible in most circumstances. Some of our schools are not as crowded. Some of our schools are more crowded, so we've not made that as a guarantee. That's why we doubled down on the universal masking. That's why we're doubling down on the vaccination and getting not just the Health Department, but a third-party vendor to continue to vaccinate kids, right? We can continue to vaccinate even the eighty percent at twelve to seventeen. Let's get the other twenty percent vaccinated and get ready for what I hope is just weeks to letting five to eleven-year-olds also be vaccinated. So we're ready to go with that, and I look forward to giving you more info soon.
Is that consistent with the guidance from the Health Department more broadly? That that's, I mean, in having a conversation with Dr. Gloria just yesterday, it wasn't clear where, you know, they are compared to us in terms of whether that's appropriate or not. I know we don't have a choice. I mean, it's not feasible otherwise, but I just want to make sure, because there is a lot of, you know, outcry from the community.
Yeah, I would say, I would say the CDC guidance, stay in health is where you can continue to have distance. Of course, do it, right? Of course. But we also, as you know, in Virginia, have Senate Bill thirteen oh three that requires virtual instruction, and really, where practicable, we'll social distance. But the law says we need to be back in person. We're going to do our, we are going to follow the law and have our kids back in person, but social distance as often as we possibly can, including, again, using that outdoor learning space, outdoor space for eating as well.
Yeah. The last piece in terms of special, short-term, I know you all did the town hall. That was very helpful, obviously, the community. Special ed remains a source of a lot of questions in terms of what's required, exceptions, et cetera, so I would recommend that we provide some more clarity publicly on that.
We're announcing in really another three or four hours, special ed community event on Monday, this coming Monday, and Dr. Boyd will have the finalizing details soon with Helen Lloyd, our communications person. We've been going back and forth trying to find the best time. We were going to have it last week, but unfortunately, it was also a time I was in with the school board for a closed meeting, and after talking with them, we really wanted to have the leadership, Dr. Ivey, myself, Dr. Boyd, all of us there, Monday, this coming Monday, and the time and place and details will be out later today.
Great, thank you for that. Long-term, for our next conversation on this, I'd love for us to consider, I mean, additional contingency plans for outbreaks. I know you presented briefly today what that's going to look like, but especially in considering other divisions that we know have shut down across the country, taking a look at that and providing that project management plan related to that. And then the second piece, obviously, there are a lot of questions around the booster and what's going to happen with the booster vaccine, et cetera. So I think long-term, hopefully for the next one, those are my two asks that we incorporate in the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give Ms. Omech. I have Dr. Anderson followed by Karen Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I do have to say that yesterday was very exciting, especially in the Anderson household. As I'm driving, the little one, who had not been in school since last March, she was literally bubbling over with excitement. She could not even sit still, and it was a really wonderful day, I think, across the division. Two issues that pretty much dominated, the feedback that I received, were around lunch and transportation, so I'm going to start there. I think the teachers and staff have done a great job in preparing to support students in the hallways and the classrooms. There's masks, there's hand sanitizer and all of that, but when we get into the cafeteria, there's inconsistencies there that do not reflect the fact that we are still in a pandemic, and it's the space where our kids are maskless and they're elbow-to-elbow in some schools. And there's just not enough social distancing or utilization of the outdoor spaces, whether they have tents, don't have tents. Overall, I think there has to be a lot of, we have to take the chains off the principals to be creative so that they could think of creative ways to solve some of their issues. I know tables are an issue, but I've seen at some schools where principals are clustering desks together to create a table so that they can provide some additional space, social distance in the classrooms, I'm sorry, in the cafeteria. So I'm really looking for, I'm raising this issue to you, not necessarily looking for an answer right now. If you want to respond, sure, but we do need to get on this as soon as possible. This is not something we can allow principals to work out in the next week or two because we're talking about life or death for some of our kids. So I would like to see some urgency about ensuring some level of consistency as well because in school A, you have half of the schools outside having lunch, and school B, every single seat of that round table in the cafeteria is being utilized, and they're screaming in each other's faces because that's what kindergartners do.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Anderson. I see Dr. Ivey, if I could, Ms. Darnett Kovacs, if I don't mind, if Dr. Ivey would like to respond to that. I know she's been working closely with our schools and region assistant superintendents. Dr. Ivey?
Sure. Good morning, everyone, and I would just like to assure the board and the public that we are reviewing each school's plans for lunch and cafeteria setup and the region assistant superintendents and the executive principals in conjunction with Dr. Boyd's team and Mr. Plattenberg, and we are making adjustments where there are needed. And we are going to continue to provide additional guidance as well as photos and examples, and we're going to continue to do that all week and into the, and every day after that, if maybe. So you should see some improvements as we work through each school.
Thank you. And again, just looking for some creative solution, solutioning here to these issues. Tables should not be what stops kids from eating outside, at the elementary especially. They see it as a joy to take those yoga mats and picnic. It's a fun thing. Let's go ahead and take advantage of that.
Totally agree with you.
Thank you. Secondarily, the transportation, the second run, and sorry, that's the term we use in Loudon, so that's stuck in my head as somebody who had probably like ten second-run buses in a year. Not happy, but you made, we made it work. Parents are concerned that, one, they don't have the timetable, and I know yesterday it was the first day, so that's just something I want to put on your radar. They want to know how long is it going to take for their children to come in? And also lots of concerns with students who are left outside to wait for their buses, and they don't know how long. Is it ten minutes, fifteen minutes, forty-five? When we have the heat that we had yesterday and rain that's going to come, because let's be clear, this transportation issue is not going to be resolved anytime soon, so we're going to have these second-run buses for a while. What guidance can we give to the principals to ensure that there's some things in place so that kids are protected while they're waiting for their buses? You know, using the gym to just say, hey, if you're in second run, go to the gyms, parceling them out in sections. And I'm just sharing some of the things that I've utilized because I've had second run for years. So I just wanted to be sure that I raised that, and I don't know if this is, who wants to take that?
Mr. Plattenberg, you want to make a couple of comments about that?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, and thank you for the feedback, because the first couple of days of school, that's exactly what we need, is the feedback about until our schools get back in their rhythm and flow about the pros and the cons, you know, the challenges and what I say are the opportunities. I can tell you that as of this morning, we've had close to a forty percent decrease in the number of buses that were late in comparison to yesterday. That is massive.
I think the bike is not on.
So when you talk about the number of, we have a forty percent decrease in the number of buses that were late from the first day from what you call second runs, and that is what we called it in Loudon, we did call them second runs, and we are calling them double backs here, and we felt that was more descriptive for our communities because, frankly, we had had eight last year, and we have over twenty this year, but they are intrusive. And we are working with schools to talk about ways to administer and manage, and because we had them in every area, every region, excuse me, last year, we do have schools who did have experiences to how to manage, as you alluded to, the students and the administration to supervise while they're waiting. Now, as far as people waiting for, and unfortunately, this morning, it's tall in there, you know, Langley, Spring Hill, and Longfellow, so those were the three that were an hour this morning in our late runs. And it is that domino effect of buses that serve in one region or another. But to the point, that's the beauty of our Here Comes the Bus app. Now, the Here Comes the Bus app, I highly recommend parents sign up for that. We did have some challenges with that yesterday, but we've worked those out through this morning, and then email notification or the pinging of where your bus is and the updates about the delays. I would highly recommend the parents sign up for that. And if they're having issues, again, to give you, to give us that feedback so we can address them. But on a regular school year, pre-pandemic, we would go through up till October or November before we ironed out all of the transportation issues. We have been phenomenally, our team has been really just quite amazing. I'm so fortunate to have Ms. Francine Ferbey, Michelle, and Sherri Dyson, and Paula DeAndre. Those folks have been doing a phenomenal job of jumping on these issues because we know everybody is anxious about it, including us. We're excited about this, starts of the new school year. We have some extreme challenges with this bus driver shortage, but we are working with our communities. Our kiss and rides were jammed yesterday and this morning. It's a healthy problem to have because we asked our communities, our parents, to work with us and to please assist us in dropping off their students, but we do think that rhythm and that flow will start to balance out. So again, thank you for the feedback, but those would be my recommendations, to use the Here Comes the Bus app, to sign up for that. If you have any issues, please let us know. And also recognize that we're making improvements each and every day for, as I said, to have eliminated forty percent of the issues we had on the first day is nothing short of phenomenal. The state does allow for thirty days of buses to be overcrowded. We don't like that reality. We did have some buses that were overcrowded yesterday, and those are ones that we do not take on major highways to make sure that they're safe until we figure out how to supplement those runs.
Are students who have phones also able to access the Here Comes the Bus app, or is that just for parents?
It's currently just for the individual who has accessed the student information system, so obviously, it's not generally the students who can access the SIS information for obvious reasons, but, so it generally is for parents. But we are looking at that because we did get feedback last year on that.
Okay. The third thing that I wanted to ask was around snacks.
Dr. Anderson, your time is up.
I wasn't sure if that had started.
I'll put you down for a go-back. I'm sure many people want that. Next, I have Ms. Corbett Sanders followed by Ms. Cullen.
First, I do want to thank all of our staff and both leadership, but at the building level in particular, for the Herculean efforts that they have put forth to open our schools on time, five days a week. However, I am very concerned. I'm concerned because we did not have a plan in place to ensure that we had adequate outdoor space usage on day one, and I'm glad to hear that, Dr. Ivey, you are now looking at this on a school-by-school basis, but this should have been done well before our schools opened. And my concern is this. I get pictures of situations where children, high school kids, have no mask and they're eating donuts in an auditorium because there's no outdoor picnic tables, there's no tent, and in that case, that is a school that is in the process of being renovated, and there's delays associated with that school actually being built- And there's delays associated with that school actually being built out because of the construction shortage. And so now we have a situation that is somewhat in a crisis mode. And we do need to have a plan in action. And I would like to have at least our schools that are under renovation prioritize on the outdoor learning spaces and cafeterias. Because we have to address these issues, or we are going to face outbreaks on a more frequent basis. I expect that we will have outbreaks, but we do need to address that. Along those lines, I would like to have a kit at every school, based on the number of students in the school, that says you get this many outdoor tables, they will be delivered by this Friday, or whatever is the date. And so that kids can eat outside, they can conduct classrooms outside. And based on a per capita, we need to have a certain amount of tents that are available. Because we have outdoor spaces, but what I'm told is we don't have coverage over top of them. And the third area is as far as monitors, classroom monitors. I know that we no longer have our classroom monitors, but we need to find a way of getting staff or volunteers. We've had some people weigh in saying, because the Shack sent us a message last week saying that there's the Fairfax County volunteers that are willing to help out. We also have, we're giving stipends for our special ed teachers to go, because of the efforts they're doing. Why not give a stipend to have people cover the outdoor activities? We have to be creative, as Dr. Anderson has said so eloquently. But I am very concerned that these need to be fast-tracked on resolving these issues. Thank you.
Would anyone like to comment?
Ms. Darnak Kovacs?
Yes.
I can start?
Yes, thank you.
So thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I just want to clarify, we have been working with our schools. And we are not in reactionary mode. The planning for these spaces and crowds and so forth started long before this week. We obviously still have continued work. And we have identified some further hotspots in which we need to look at additional measures. And we're now going back and re-looking at all of our schools. But I just want to be clear, those, these processes and communications and working with principals, and the principals themselves, working on each school's individual footprint and processes and population, et cetera, did start long before this week. And we will continue. Thank you for your suggestions. And we certainly will be working with our departments to see just what else we can put into place, along with our principals, who are working very closely with us. So thank you. And we did, the school that you are identifying, we are reviewing that one in particular very carefully. So thank you.
Mr. Plattenberg?
Yeah, absolutely. And I do appreciate, as Dr. Ivy said, the feedback. I'll just say that in regard to the outdoor spaces, we did initially, when we first, when that first was authorized, we had some really good, successful pushes on that. And we did deploy them in a number of spaces. We also, though, then ran into the same supply chain issues that a lot of folks have experienced. Not only with the delivery, with the orders, and with the shipping and distribution. That did come into, impacted a little bit. But again, thank you for bringing that up because we did, go ahead and we're deploying one to help address that situation. We currently have requests for 197 tents over 187, 185 facilities. We have lost one to vandalism, one to storms. And we have been, our teams have been working to deploy them rapidly. They've been, we've been working all past year. We had eight in the original pilot when this initially came out. We had 80 schools that had innovative ways and creative ways to utilize them. But I have to tell you, the principals were really bullish on this year in thinking about, after we had gotten to a number of different phases of whether or not we were going to go back to school, masking policies, everything that we've covered, to get this successful startup. And it was the request that made my teams work both Saturday and Sunday, putting up tents. We're putting up approximately 20 per week, notwithstanding any inclement weather issues. You know, some that we really got hit by with trees and power outages. So we are continuing to deploy that. It was a steady, measured approach. We did have some issues with supply chain. But certainly, your feedback is spot on, that we need to make sure that we're providing all the supports for our schools and our communities to make it so that they have those alternatives. But I did just want to add some of that. So thank you again for bringing it up.
Since I had a couple of seconds left?
You don't, but.
No, they cleared it. I did have seconds left. I'm not saying that our staff weren't working towards a solution. That is not what I said. What I'm saying is that we need to have a consistent and intentional approach to embracing outdoor learning spaces, cafeteria at every school. And that's where I just am encouraging that mindset. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I will put you on for a go back if you would like. Ms. Cullen, followed by Ms. Seismar Heiser.
Yeah, I just want to echo with lunches. I think the number one thing I'm hearing from our principals is just bodies to be able to monitor this. And in the spring, they had luckily the monitors that we had provided. So I would, I would really like to see us push to get some additional money to hire folks. Or I like the stipend idea. I mean, our teachers do need to eat, though. So I just want to make sure we have people to cover. For the buses, yes, I'm definitely hearing better today. I think that's awesome, 40% change, Mr. Plattenberg, well done. A question I had, though, this morning on the way here, I passed 14 buses. And only one of them had their windows cracked a tiny bit. So how can we, I thought when we talked about mitigation and with the bus drivers, the bus drivers were really talking about wanting the windows open if at all possible. So how can we adjust that?
Well, I can tell you that we do talk about the biggest mitigation is the mask wearing and the mandatory mask wearing on our bus and transportation. We did say where appropriate, where they could, go ahead and put the windows down on the buses. But I can tell you, we've had some issues with bees getting in the buses when the windows were down as well. And when it was really extremely humid, we had some issues with that. So it's one of these things that we're working with our drivers. We're trying to make it as an, not an operational systemic mandate, but as an option. In fact, it was specifically addressed as one of the things in the CDC, talking about bus windows and so forth. And we did articulate that with our drivers as well.
Awesome. Thank you. To that point, because we asked parents to drive their kids if possible, can we work with the county to adjust crossing guard times? Because now, Lake Braddock this morning, I, it's close to home as I'm trying to drive my child there. But normally, the crossing guard showing up at 7:30 was no problem. People are obviously trying to get there early and get in line. And so at 7:00 AM, it's backed up past Lee Chapel Road. I mean, I've never seen anything like it. So I think if there's a way, I know that old system, I totally get it. And the crossing guards do a beautiful, beautiful job. But our buses were getting stuck like crazy without a crossing guard there.
We have our weekly meeting, I have my weekly meeting with the county executive and his top leadership. And we can brief that. And I can get a recommendation, maybe Mr. Smith from you and Jeff, about what would be appropriate. And see what we could do to lengthen the time, or come a little earlier, stay a little later. Because we are going, this is not going to be a one-week thing. The volume is going to be higher for kiss and ride all year, or until the vaccination is available for all kids that are going to school. So we'll look at that.
And a lot more kids walking and biking, which I think we want to encourage all the time, which is great. But they got to have a safe way to get there. So I really would appreciate that. The next is, can we clarify with our principals about mask wearing and the types of mask? We still have kids wearing gaiters. We have masks with valves yesterday and today, and still kids with bandanas on their face. So can we help the principals figure out how to navigate that?
Yes, we'll definitely take care of that. Dr. Boyd, I know is here. Dr. Boyd, your hands up. Do you want to make a couple of comments about that? And my apologies, Dr. Boyd, if there was something else that you had wanted to say earlier, referencing any board member questions, please. Thank you, Dr. Boyd.
No worries. And good afternoon, everyone. And thank you so much for that question. We have provided some additional information around approved face masks. And those that are not approved are not recommended by the CDC. And we know, as we started on last year, at the beginning of last year's, neck gaiters were not permitted. The CDC has evolved that information. And gaiters that are multi-layered are now permitted. And we have included that on our guidance to principals. But again, with all of the things in the pandemic, we will continue to reiterate that information, not only to our principals, but also to our families, that I wanted to share that piece with you as it relates to masks. And we'll certainly follow up because as you shared, bandanas are not permitted if they don't provide that secure closing around the face, around the mouth and nose. So thank you so much for that. And the only other piece that I wanted to follow up, just briefly in response to, I know, I thank Ms. McLaughlin so much for taking time on yesterday evening to talk with us regarding returning our students who are fully vaccinated and asymptomatic to in-person activities. And the team, we are discussing some other opportunities that we might be able to implement to enable our students who are both fully vaccinated and asymptomatic that we can document, having them to be in school. So we hope to provide you updated information around those processes in the coming days.
Go ahead.
The next question I have is around lunch. Awesome that we are, the USDA is giving us a waiver. Super excited. Has caused tons more lines and holdup in the lunchroom. So that kids now are not having a chance to eat. So, you know, one problem causes another. So can we make sure that we give the staff support that they need? If we need extra bodies, then we need extra bodies to help get these kids through the line in time. And also clarifying, I had a lot of questions yesterday about add-ons. Kids want to be able to buy additional things because they are starving to death after having full access to the snack drawer 24 hours a day. The last one, super fast, is vaccines. Can we please state for the community that we, as a system, are not able to mandate vaccines for our students? I think there is some confusion around that.
Yeah, we will continue to work with our division council to review guidance around the vaccination mandate for students. Obviously, I know that this has come out in the press because there is one school district in America, in California, that is doing it. As I understand it, that is not something that we're able to do yet in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I know Ms. Corbett Sanders and others were sitting on a state task force around this. But I will look to get some updates. And I will simply say that I do think, just like the staff vaccination mandate, we need to, as this pandemic evolves, continue to go back and return to these kinds of issues that can really help make our schools safe for in-person instruction now and forever. So I don't know, I'll defer to Ms. Darnak Kovacs.
Yeah, if you were on a panel, please quickly share what you know.
So, Dr. Braybrand, the state code requires any vaccination mandates to be done through the VDH, the Virginia Department of Health, which is supposed to refer those mandates to the legislature. The legislature is not meeting again until January. But this may be an area where this board, as we look at our legislative priorities, would urge that.
Thank you. And we certainly would love to work with board members around this. And I must tell you that it is conversation that is beginning among our leadership team. We would love to partner with the board and talk about some advocacy around this, especially as we get closer to, and we now have regular authorization of the Pfizer vaccine. And we're expecting, certainly, we're expecting by the end of this calendar year, if not even sooner, to have the vaccination available to all of our kids.
All right. Thank you. I have Ms. Seismar Heiser, followed by Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. A lot of my questions have been asked, and so I don't have a ton more to ask. But I did have one question. Are we using safety teams like we did last year to check on fidelity to implementation? I'm hearing a lot of concerns about masks, maybe not being worn appropriately, or, so that's my first question.
Yes, we're using the company that Loudon used as an outside vendor to really have those outside fresh eyes and not our staff members. And that's going to be set up and running for this year.
So it's going to be set up and running? It's not started yet?
I don't know, Mr. Smith or Mr. Plattenberg, you can tell me when the effective date is. No, that is correct. We're still finishing up the hiring process. We do have some existing transitional employees that were retired that were hired to help. HR's been working with us to make sure, we have, make sure all the background checks, everything that's worked out for these individuals. But I can tell you, you know, we've been through, every one of our principals has been through, as all staff have mandated, the PD, ITPDE on PPE and everything else that we've had to go through. So there is knowledge and awareness, our custodians and so forth, we've talked about what we've been going through. So we're looking forward to this robust program to be up and at them very soon because we recognize it needed to be done yesterday. With this transition, right, from what we used to have. And the reporting will be, reporting to the principals. They have a format that was developed, the Google Sheets that we developed last year. So the principals can have it as an assistive, informing way. It is not supposed to be punitive because everything is in the spirit and intent to make sure that we provide the safest environments for our students.
Absolutely. And I appreciate that. I guess my question, and I don't want this to be punitive. This is all a new normal. We're all trying to learn and adapt it together, right? But it's also, you know, with how we're doing schools issue with five days in a week, masks are super important as part of one of our layered prevention strategies. So in the meantime, until this is set up, is there a mechanism for, to ensure that we're, I know there's PD, but ensuring that's actually being implemented with fidelity among staff, among students? And what's the mechanism to help continue to train or coach, whatever it may be, if things aren't being worn the way they need to be?
Yeah, I'll follow up with Dr. Boyd and also to find out what our timeline is. And I'll give you a formal response on that as well.
Okay. I'm just saying that I've been hearing a lot of concerns from students about masks not being worn appropriately, slippage, teachers. And the other question I had is on ventilation and AC. I'm hearing some concerns about AC units not working or being really hot, which is, and of course, people are feeling more uncomfortable in masks and taking them off. So just, I don't know if you've been hearing anything, but if you have any updates on what our air quality and just in general, what's going on with that?
Yes, absolutely. And the first day, I heard a lot of that feedback as well. In fact, I got some from Ellen Riley as I was coming into the work session about the yellow hallway at McLean being 90 degrees. And so I've got my team going over there. Wherever we've been having these issues identified to us, we're immediately responding to them. But I can tell you, a lot of that has to do with first-day issues. When we're beginning to open up the schools and the doors constantly being open, we can get, when it's hot and humid like it is yesterday and today, up to 94 degrees. We will have some areas that are not as cool as other areas. But our air transition, the airflow that we have, the frequency that we have, six times, you know, when we talk about how many times per hour that we have that occur, and our filtration, and our filtration replacement, we have a robust, aggressive program. So I can tell you that where we're hearing about any issues people are experiencing. In fact, I spoke with Ms. Adams even this morning about an issue that she brought to my attention. So we appreciate where that information comes from, and we respond to it immediately and aggressively.
So I guess the question I would have is, in the meantime.
Oh, by the way, I'm sorry. One thing Mr. Smith had mentioned, and I apologize for interrupting, but I meant to say it is that whether or not the air temperature may be somebody's issue. Because I've done this before in a room, and I've asked everybody in the room to raise their hand if you're cold, raise the hand if you're hot, raise the hand if you're comfortable, and it gets to be a third, a third, a third. So the temperature is one thing, but yes, the airflow, to your point.
And I do appreciate that, as someone who is always cold. But, you know, I do think, I am concerned when I'm hearing about heat, you know, what it's 90, 80 degrees in these rooms. I guess my question would be for perhaps Dr. Braybrand, perhaps for you. What are we telling our principals, or what are our principals doing to be creative? Because if it is 90 degrees, until you get there to address it, in terms of taking the class outside for, spreading that for a mask break, something, because it is difficult. And it may lead to people not using masks properly in some rooms. And I am concerned about transmission because our goal is to keep our kids safe in schools, in schools, right? So are we allowing our principals or teachers to be a little creative until these issues are fixed?
Well, I can't address what each individual principal is doing, but I can say this. If, generally, as a rule of thumb, it is cooler inside of a facility than on the exterior. The air quality on the inside of a facility, because it's conditioned, is 90% to 99% more improved or better because it's conditioned than what's on the outside. So in terms of the interior space, when somebody says it's too hot, when I go over and do actual temperature readings, then I know what the actual temperatures are. I'm not saying that they're misleading, that it's not hot. I'm just saying that we go ahead and do the actual verification. But for principals, I do know that when they've had spaces, for some reason, there's been an issue in a classroom because of a mechanical failure, they are very creative about using alternative spaces so that students are subjected to what you talked about, that total discomfort. And yes, wearing masks, although a discomfort, is something that I'm finding even every one of us in this room are getting more accustomed to again. Because we got to that point where we had been wearing them all along, it was cool outside. outside, but then when we went back and started wearing it again constantly with the heat, it became a real inconvenience, but one that we endure through. So, yeah, I mean, all great points and feedback.
Great, and I was more bringing up the outside in terms of spreading kids out and being able to take a five-minute mask break is what I was bringing up, as opposed to the temperature. Quick question, but I appreciate your statements. Quick question, you've talked about a student vaccinating, needing to quarantine or a class, but what if a teacher is out sick and needs to quarantine? Is that a substitute situation, or what happens in that situation?
We have information on that, we have a chart. We can get you that information that specifically happens about what happens if the teacher is out. I don't know whether you want to go into that right now, or we can get you that information. I think I'll just get you the information.
People have been asking, so I'm just kind of, to be able to share to the public sort of what the protocol would be. And then, one other question that I have, I mean, I have a lot of concerns about lunch as well, and, but one other question I had in terms of the buses and the crossing guards. Mr. Plannenberg, I think I heard you say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you know, there's issues with bees, or we're telling bus drivers they can open the windows, but we don't want to be prescriptive, something along those lines, and I don't mean to quote you. Again, when we're really leaning into masks and airflow as our two sort of main layer prevention strategies, can we strongly encourage bus drivers to open the windows? Can we sort of say, we're not making you do it, but we really want you to do it? The other question about crossing guards is, what are we looking for? I appreciate Ms. Cohen's statement about additional hours. Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, you can save that for a go back, that second question, or just, or finish up your thought, just go ahead.
Yeah, just super quick about additional places where crossing, we may not put crossing guards before, but may encourage walkers from additional spaces. Thank you, Ms. Danakoff, thanks.
I can address that we did strongly encourage. It was one thing that Ms. Furby did reiterate to me just when I was speaking. She texted me and said, yes, we do strongly encourage the use of putting the windows down. I know it's something that some of the employee association groups had talked about as well. The other, the other piece about the crossing guards, I do know that the crossing guard situation, they do have an employee shortage as well. We've been facing that extremely, it's been kind of pervasive over the years, but this year it is equally as bad as bus drivers for us. We are working with them in close communication, as Dr. Braybrand had said, that they do have a meeting coming up where they are going to be talking about it even further. And then, the encouraging of the Safe Race to Schools and the grant coordinator with that, that is, I think, in Instructional Services. We do encourage those, the expansion of that and those walkways. I know that there are some real ardent activists in the community that work with us as well. I'll make sure that when we have any issues that are brought to my attention from my lens, I'll try to provide not only the information that we have about potential pathways that we already use for certain schools, but also places where students can park their bikes and so forth in a safe way. And if they don't have that, then we go ahead and make sure that we encourage it as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch, followed by Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Thank you. I have some questions on Slide nine. We have a bit of information about additional vaccination clinics, but much of the, and the MOU for other opportunities for vaccination. Much of the information says that additional details will be forthcoming. Can you share anything about what you envision those things to be and what the timeline is for the additional information or the beginning of those services?
Dr. Boyd, would you like to talk to the question that Mr. Frisch just raised?
Certainly. Mr. Frisch, thank you for that question. So, we are still in final, finalizing the MOU, the memorandum of understanding with the third-party provider, but we do envision partnering with them for a number of things. So, we are looking to partner with them to support us with the screening testing for staff who are either not fully vaccinated or who have opted not to divulge that information. Our goal is to implement testing in increments that are aligned with the CDC being weekly testing for the individuals that fall in that category. We're also looking to partner with those, that provider to support student testing, screening testing, again, during the levels of community transmission where it's recommended by the CDC, so that would be a moderate, substantial or high transmission. And the CDC recommends screening testing 10% of your student population. The screening testing, as you would imagine, for students will be a little bit different in that we would have to have parental consent to be able to screen those students. So, that's a little bit different of a caveat than the adult screening. We also plan on partnering with this third-party to be able to support additional access for students for school entrance vaccinations, and also to be an additional support for any COVID testing for our employees and/or staff, excuse me, and/or students who didn't participate in our vaccination clinics. Also want to highlight, just for clarity purposes, is that we continue to plan to partner directly with the Health Department around providing those targeted onsite COVID vaccination clinics for our elementary-age students once that vaccine becomes available. So, that's just a little snapshot of the things that we're looking for with this third-party provider, really wanting to remove barriers and really wanting to stand up the need for vaccinations or testing in the absence, given that CDC indicates that that's going to be one of the things that really helps in the pandemic and one of the things that helps to keep stakeholders safe.
And I would also add that we're, we plan to begin our data collection and verification processes this week, and so more information will be coming as we share that with our stakeholder groups, our teacher associations, principal associations, and provide that update to the board on what that initial process looks like for data collection and verification.
Thank you. That all sounds good. Can you give us a rough timeline as to when we expect these things to begin?
We are in the process of finalizing the first part of the MOU that deals with those optional suite of services, if you will, and the optional suite of services, where those student supports and the student testing. And we're in the final stages of finalizing that, and we know that the provider has indicated that the deal will be able to be up and running within six weeks of MOU execution, and we're working with them, we meet with them daily. If we're able to get that moving any quicker, we would certainly update the board and our community about that. With regard to the specific staff testing, we're doing an addendum so that as we're working on one, we're not holding up the other with those pieces. So, we can give you an update on the timeline, but we are still working towards that timeline for our staff piece to be able to be implemented by the end of October.
And so, with the six-week timeline, the best we could hope for is sometime in late September?
Correct.
And that's like if we execute the MOU this week?
Correct.
All right, and that, and that holds true for the screening testing as well?
The screening testing for students.
And for staff, one of the common questions I've received about the vaccine requirements and screening testing for staff is why late October? Can you talk a little bit about what's going into executing this plan?
Sure, and certainly, oh, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
No, I would say that the timing has to do with some of the issues that Dr. Boyd addressed with the MOU and ensuring that we have the third-party providers in place. Also, there is a communication aspect so that we can communicate clearly to our staff, make sure that our principals and program managers are well aware of how we'll handle staff who perhaps don't either choose to do A or B, and then what happens with C. And so, we're still working with our division council on some of those HR components. And again, there's a timing piece to that as well. We also feel that by ensuring that our employees know that this is coming with clear communication, that they will have time to engage in that vaccination process. So, there are several moving pieces, and we feel that an October timeline is doable for us at this point.
If the booster is available for folks who are early vaccinated, will the booster play into the requirement?
So, currently, we're looking at what that booster requirement will mean for staff at this point, since it's not fully necessary for full vaccination. We're going with current CDC guidelines for full vaccination, and then we will follow up individually with those employees who have the need for the additional booster shot. As we put information out to staff, they are letting us know when they've had their final shot, their, so their final dose, which will give us more information about where they are in the process and that boost, and where they are with regard to the booster.
But if the CDC guidance does indicate the booster should be taken by people at some point, then that'll roll into our requirement?
That would roll into the requirement, and we would have to add some additional timing there.
Okay.
But, but just on that, Mr. Frisch, just for current communication, we're only talking about for Pfizer and Moderna that they get two. We're not requiring three right here out of the gate because we don't have the guidance yet, and we don't want to send people and overwhelm our Health Department.
Very small portion of the population is eligible for the booster.
Right, right, right. I just want to say, yes, we would roll in. We're already thinking ahead, yes, and I think frankly, we're going to build in things now that we're going to do this year. They're going to be with us for, really frankly, I think, the rest of our time as a school system, and we're building them in right now all super quickly. And I know times of the essence, we're, we are going with all deliberate speed to get this MOU done, up and running, so that we're ready and get this thing done. If we can do it sooner, we will.
Speaking of, you know, doing what we can, I know that we've talked a little bit about vaccinations for students not being able to be required unless VDH and the, and the General Assembly Act on it, but that's dealing with students attending class. Are we looking at other opportunities to require vaccinations or encourage vaccinations, whether they be extracurricular activities, sports activities, community use of our facilities, attending school board meetings, et cetera?
Yeah, I don't think we've taken anything off the table about what else we can do to really continue to say to our community, we need to vax up, but I don't have anything to share with you at this time. As you all said, part of what we're, just as we're coming back in, is the challenges around our athletics and extracurricular activities, and I think we need to take a hard look at those, but I don't have an update for you yet at this time. I'll keep you posted.
Great. On the subject of, of lunch, do we know how many tents are in, in route to being delivered at some point in the near future, or on backorder, I guess?
Yes, I have that information. I mean, when, when I take a look at the number of tents that are basically distributed, I can just go down the entire list that I have, but I could provide that to the school board about, you know, yeah, well, and as I said before, we have requests for 197 tents at 185 facilities.
Yeah.
And we're working on looking at providing and gathering another 100 tents beyond the 100 that we already have erected in place. So, we think that the momentum, I mean, I'm just grateful that we are where we are.
And I know that people are working really hard to get them installed.
Well, yes, sir, but in addition to that, Ms. Frisch, I mean, the fact that we started with outdoor learning, the concept of outdoor learning, the schools that were the early adopters, the A-Pilot schools, this whole initiative, and then providing flexible spaces, it came at a confluence that the, the, the energy and inertia is going well beyond what we anticipated. So, in the areas that, you know, we experienced and the feedback we've gotten about schools, about how they can, they, there's some that were a little reticent because they had so many other things to do. Principals, some principals now have said, absolutely, I see the value, I know I can do this, I have teams that are, so we're really trying to keep up with that, that demand. So, as I said, we've got 100 in, we've got orders for, request for 190 some, and we have 185 facilities, and we're continuing to order more tents and keep them in storage so that we can, for vandalism, for storm damage, so that we can readily replace them as we need.
We'll, we'll provide regular tent updates. We know, a super-hot topic to the board. We, no, I'm serious, we will, because you're going to want to know, and then where are they, when are they coming? So, you, as board members, will know, be able to help when you get community emails, where are the tents, how many more tents? We'll work on getting that for you in the days ahead. Thanks.
Maybe getting ahead of the curve. Are we thinking about heating lamps or anything like that to keep them warm when the weather changes?
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah. Thank you for the feedback. No, I know it's a serious question. I mean, the reality of it is, as we're going into this foray, we're currently, what we found is, in some instances, at some schools, feedback I received from school board members, is that when you take a look at these tents, and some of them in certain locations, whether with, they're a high-quality item, they're a very good tent structure, but when they have the sidewalls down, they're pretty hot, if there's no airflow. So, to your point, where you don't plan on air conditioning, we did have a dollar amount of $1.1 million per tent to truly outfit as a full classroom with many other aspects to it, outdoor, exterior landscaping, blah, 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 I could go down the list. But what we're trying to do is, we're trying to work more organically with schools that have the functional use, to continue to grow. But we'll keep you posted, as Dr. Braybrand said, as our progression on these tents and the use, and then the application, because I think, to your point, flexible spaces have always been something that we've talked about in our design, and it absolutely is imperative to be a part of our physical site of our schools beyond the interior classroom walls. So, I think your point is valid.
All right, and then finally, I too would like to see us investing in lunch monitors so that we can make sure that that's covered. And final question on technology, is this going to be the year that we follow through on some follow-on motions around best practices, measuring success, and providing parents and staff with information about screen time usage?
Yes, this is the year. We have a team working on that, and we'll be bringing that to the school board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. I have Ms. Kies-Gamara, followed by Ms. Bukarski and Ms. Tolan.
Thank you. I want to add my thanks to the staff. I know that this is a continuously developing process, and so, it's a lot of continuous work, and we are much appreciative. I also look forward to the tent watch that Dr. Braybrand mentioned. If we can put that online so parents can follow it, maybe have an icon or something. I want to start with some, we talked a little bit about the quarantine, quarantine requirements for students who may or may not be vaccinated, and if they, you know, they've been exposed and how we're handling that. And I, I just wanted to, if I could ask Dr. Boyd to address this, I'm, I'm thinking the focus for me is more on the person's ability to share disease than it is whether they're vaccinated, because it's my understanding that if you are vaccinated, you can still carry and therefore impact others. And so, Dr. Boyd, if perhaps you can clarify or give us a statement on how we are coordinating with the county? I've received some letters on the confusion around this issue, but also how we might focus on identifying, making sure that we're not sharing disease irrespective of vaccination status, and how we might incorporate testing to get students back in the classroom more quickly.
Thank you, Ms. Karen Kies-Gamara, great question. So, you're right, we know that persons who are, who are fully vaccinated can certainly still get the disease and can spread the disease. And so, we are, again, applying CDC's recommendations. So, one of the pieces that the CDC recommends for persons who are fully vaccinated and asymptomatic who continue their in-person activities is for those persons to wear a face mask for 14 days. That's not something that we've had to push so much because we're doing universal masking, whereby all students and employees are wearing masks indoors irrespective of their vaccination status. So, that's one of the ways to try and mitigate spread, even though there is that exception for fully vaccinated persons. Currently, with our students, we are utilizing the Health Department to, to verify vaccination status. They have access to the Virginia Immunization System and can verify that student Francis Abbey, student Michelle Boyd are fully vaccinated in our two weeks post our last dose, if it's a two-dose series. So, we're working closely with them, and as we stand up, because we do understand and we acknowledge that there's a sense of frustration from some of our families whereby they have students who are potentially paused and awaiting verification from the Health Department, and their child is vaccinated. We know that that's particularly sensitive with the first day of school following, you know, such an impactful pandemic. And so, we are working to develop some processes for consideration, and again, it's in draft discussion, and we still have to collaborate with a number of stakeholders to identify ways whereby our school staff would be able to verify full vaccination status and have students or their parents or guardians attest that those persons are asymptomatic. The CDC also recommends that persons who would meet that criteria would recommend that those persons get tested three to five days following exposure, again, to ensure that those persons would continue to be COVID negative for COVID.
Dr. Boyd, if I, if I could interrupt you just for one second, because they won't give me a whole lot of time. With respect to those, the testing, I wanted to be more specific, do we have a plan to figure out how to make that available to speed this process up? There's a lot of nervousness about this, even though we certainly want to get kids back in, but we also don't want to, you know, maximize safety. So, do we have a plan for that for our students so we can get them back in? Younger kids aren't going to be vaccinated, so of course, that creates another wrinkle.
Certainly. So, with the, the component that I just discussed regarding... Certainly. So with the component that I just discussed regarding what our thoughts are around shifting the verification process from the Health Department to FCPS, that's still in discussion, and so we can certainly provide resources to families. We do have a partnership with the Health Department for symptomatic persons to be tested if they don't have access. So we're still working on those pieces and also just providing more knowledge and awareness about the number of free community testing resources that students and families in our communities can access through Walgreens, CVS, and things like that. So again, as we formulate that process, we'll definitely take those access to testing pieces into consideration. And certainly, if we embark, once we embark upon this screening testing for students, that'll also help well, help as well.
So I understand this is a developing process, but if, I don't know, if we have something published, I haven't seen it, where parents can understand what the status is now, and then we continue to update that as we go, is what I would be looking for. Okay?
Certainly.
I also support Dr. Braybrand using additional staffing to be able to not only monitor lunches, but outdoor learning and other maximizing to that, maximizing our space to increase safety, and also having those safety teams that can update with best practices so that when principals are looking for solutions, they have a resource to go to. So my recommendation, I'm hoping we can use SRF funds to pay for some of those folks. I know that's a later discussion. But I'd like to be able to move forward with that. Oh, my time is gone. I'll take a go back. Thank you.
Any comments from staff? No? Okay. Ms. Pocarsky.
Okay, so number one, I want to just take a moment and say just how wonderful it was to have everybody in school where kids belong yesterday. Congratulations, kudos. I know there are bumps. You know, that is not unique to FCPS, unfortunately, and we'll continue working on those. And I, you know, from my perspective and from what I've heard, kids were happy. Teachers, everyone had done as much as they possibly could to have a welcoming environment. And at the end of the day, you know, that is really what we strive for and the most important thing. I know our intention was to have a very fast update here and get some of our very high-level red flag items answered. So in the spirit of that, I'm actually just going to say my very top concerns right now. And I would just very gently ask my colleagues if they are able to wait until our later meeting for those go-backs. But, you know, everybody has to make the decision about where they are right now. Number one, I have heard, you know, some of these issues like having the bus windows down, the plans for being outside at lunches, a lot of, you know, where applicable, you know, principals purview, et cetera, et cetera. And I understand that it can seem very heavy-handed for us to say this is our policy, because the reality is there are differences among schools and things people to do. But however, I also think we can have an approach of this is our expectation. Windows on the bus will be put down. If for some reason, something happens, you know, a bus driver sees there is an issue, put them up. But the expectation is set, and then there are the exceptions. Because I think the backwards approach to a lot of the things we're doing simply doesn't work. It means we have classrooms where kids in elementary school who are unvaccinated are clustered in threes, in fives, and then you see three-fourths of the classrooms empty with a nice rug where they can all, you know. A normal classroom, yes, but not normal times. And I've seen a lot of that. I've had a lot of complaints. So I'm very worried with this approach around, you know, everything, lunch outside. You know, it's great that we have some plastic partitions, you know, science doesn't support that that does anything. So outside, get them outside. I personally don't care if we have tents. I think it's great, but that shouldn't be the hindrance. The expectation is outside. If we have a tent, wonderful. If not, use a towel. Get kids out there. As far as I know, everybody's got space to put kids somewhere. So I would really urge us to take this type of approach. Like I said, these aren't normal times. I understand it may seem a bit heavy-handed, but we have to keep these kids safe, and we have to build public trust. And that is of the utmost importance. So that is just my very high-level thing. I'm not even going to go through some of the other things, but I think that says where I am and where I think much of my public is. And I would encourage.
I know.
It goes very quickly. That's why this is taking a long time, because everybody has a lot on their minds. Ms. Tolan.
All right. Well, I'm very happy to follow that. I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Pocarsky on the lunch. I was at one school yesterday, and they don't, they're not using their tent for lunch, okay? But they have an amazing plan for lunch, outside. So I really do want to encourage that. The biggest issue I'm hearing, and a number of people have brought it up already, is the supervision. We have amazing outdoor spaces, whether it's a tent or not, but we don't have people to monitor and supervise kids if we're moving them. Even if, some schools have set up multiple cafeteria spaces, but you still need people to monitor and supervise the kids. So fully support the idea of, you know, getting these additional staff people in there to do that. Mr. Plantenburg, I won't go into detail. We've already had a detailed conversation earlier today about you can't just put up a tent and walk away. These are beautiful, expensive tents, but sometimes you need some flooring, depends, whatever. We'll take care of that and get to principals how we can take care of that. One thing I haven't heard brought up yet today is, you know, concern on class sizes. And so that's something that I wanted to bring up. I know certainly we have our regulations about, you know, what are the maximum number of kids in classes. Again, these are exceptional times. So I would really like us to do a little bit of research on situations where we're right at that max for class sizes, and we've got lots of bodies in a room. I know one school in particular, they put, in those classroom situations, they put additional air purifiers. I don't know if that makes a difference, but I would really like to look at our staffing. And, you know, in situations where we're right at that edge, can we look at opening up another class? I mean, I would just really like to investigate that. I'm sure we have that all over the county. So that may be a can of worms, but I wanted to put that on the table. Of course, I've heard from my Langley parents this morning about the buses and the timing. And so would just really love us to, we've already talked about that, be creative about, do we bring kids a little bit earlier to some of the schools? I know that's another hardship, and we're going to need those extra people for supervision to, you know, if kids are showing up at one school earlier so that that domino effect, you know, doesn't keep happening. You know, how do we, you know, handle that kind of situation? I've had already schools where they needed information from the Health Department over the weekend. And I understand the Health Department is closed on the weekend. So, you know, as we're discussing here, how do we expedite information and get the information that we need to understand, you know, what we need to do with quarantining, et cetera? Can we please work with the Health Department and see what, you know, what do we do on the weekend? Our principals need to know, you know, what happens there. I would, I'd like to encourage our, oops, just ran out of time.
Yes, you are.
I'll talk about this in the next session.
All right. Ms. Maren.
Thank you. And yes, I had no expectations that this was going to be quick. I know this is all important. Fortunately, it sounds like a lot of what's been discussed does lead into our year-end budget discussion as well as our SRF III. So hopefully, we, well, I'd like to share some themes when we get to that point to help our conversation. But I want to endorse what's been said, particularly by Ms. Pocarsky, most recently, getting outside. I am dismayed that we're not as far along with that as we are, knowing how much facilities does. You know, I appreciate that, but let's just get them outside, so that will be more that I'll speak to in the budget portion. And so just a reminder, we had 20 minutes left for this portion when we were supposed to be talking about year-end budget. So let's see if we can blend this together and move on to SRF after lunch. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, thank you for that reminder. So we are scheduled to break at 1:00. I will have my comments, and then, as Ms. Pocarsky, our chair suggested, and I will as well, if you can perhaps leave your go-backs on this particular topic for later on, unless you feel like you must have a go-back. If you feel like you must have a go-back, please keep your name plaque up. If you feel like it can wait till later on, I would appreciate that. But that is your choice. So we know that we will be running a little late, lunch will be running a little late, and SRF will be running a little late based upon our decisions here. So I will let you ponder that for a moment while I ask my questions. So the first one, and all of these were covered by my colleagues, but I do have some nuances. Dr. Braybrand, when will we have the dashboard updated so we know of outbreaks that have been, the outbreaks that have been occurring in our athletics? What's happening now is we're hearing via each other, but that is not to the board as a whole.
Dr. Boyd, do you want to share anything about our dashboard process and updates to that?
I can double-check. The dashboard was supposed to be up and running, but I'll double-check to see if there's any issues with that.
VDH has re-updated their dashboard, and they will have school district-specific information. They had taken some of that down, to be honest, late in the year last year, many of you know, and they are now returning to it. And so as they're updating theirs, we feed to theirs. So as Dr. Boyd said, we'll get you an update. But we're going to continue transparency, and we're continuing notification when there is COVID in schools. We've actually had some parents ask, I don't want to be notified, but we need to continue to communicate to our community what's going on, and we will do so. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think just for board, for the board itself, I think we need to loop back in and around. If, you know, there was an athletic outbreak, when are those people cleared? I think we need to know and understand that, because right now, we're finding out from our constituency, and that's not the right place. So the second thing, I thank you about the screening testing. I just want to say, time is of the essence. This has been a broken record for me since June of last year, and so I think it's extremely important that we have the screening testing for those who cannot be vaccinated for some reason or is breakthrough vaccines occur. So please, Dr. Braybrand, get this MOU signed as soon as we can, and because I am a little concerned about the six weeks after the MOU that we really can't start testing. And do we know what kind of testing we're going to be offering? Is it going to be the one where you do the?
Just by the way, we do have the dashboard up and running. Dr. Boyd just confirmed for me. And we'll start to link that in my, either my Braybrand briefing or my Friday letter. We'll figure out the right place to do that. So the board's getting that, in addition to a personal follow-up, which I know you guys like. Dr. Boyd, do we know the kind of tests that we will have? The, I know there's binax, there's a bunch of different tests. Do we know yet that detail yet?
In response to our staff and our screening testing, we have a couple of options that we are discussing, whether we will be doing the antigen test or the PCR test, and also whether we will be doing pool testing or individual testing. So that's under current discussion now, and we should have some updated information for you in the next couple of days with that regard.
Thank you for that. And again, my number one concern with my constituents, not just since yesterday, but before, is about the lunch space and how we can be creative about that. I will share, like, one of my schools, they're being very creative. They are hiring back their lunch, their monitors, their classroom monitors, and a lot of these kids are recent college graduates. They are recent college graduates. I know for this particular school, I didn't know. It was like a cross-collision of worlds. People that I know from my personal life are working in this school and that I represent part of this school. And it's just really important that we do this, and we look, and we look at everywhere. And if we have some responsible young people with recent college degrees, or even if not, if they've been shown responsible in these monitors, I think that's a good cadre of people to look for to help us with the outside lunch situation, because that is extremely important. So I will leave my 40 seconds on the table, and my colleagues, yes, note my generosity. I know, so gracious. So one minute, please, if we can get one minute, and then we can get Ms. Burden in here, and we can be a little bit closer to, our break was scheduled from 1:00 to 1:30, but if we can get, you know, done in the next half hour, just be 15 minutes behind schedule, I think we should be okay. But we need to finish this up. I see three go-backs. I will start in the order in which you came. If you can get your comments in in one minute. Ms. McLaughlin.
Very quickly, Dr. Braybrand, I want to emphasize for us in the board, masks are 85% effective with exposure to the vaccine. So there is a reason that the CDC says if you are maxed up, masked up and vaxxed up, that's why we're talking about then, you don't isolate. So I think there's going to need to be clarity for the board and the public, and we've got to get our messages out better on that. Secondly, having a child in college, the spit tests have high rates of accuracy. The nasal swabs, not. I know too many people, including myself, the nasal swabs are not accurate. So I don't want to be spending good taxpayer money and SRF funds on nasal swabs. We've got to look into that. And then finally, we've got to have the clarity for our principals, who are being asked to make the call on what is a close contact when this happens, especially in sports. They want and need the training on this. So I'll go offline with you and copy the board. But I learned a lot yesterday, and I've got some suggestions to help us really prevent getting kids stuck and out of school.
Ms. McLaughlin. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Just continuing on the eating part, breakfasts are being consumed in the classroom as well as snacks, because in a lot of schools, the lunch period has been elongated to reduce the number of kids that are in the cafeteria. But that means kids are eating in the classroom in close proximity to each other. It's replicating the problem in another space. So I'd like for that to be reviewed in terms of snacks and breakfast in the classrooms. We're in close contact where kids are maskless. I think we're just providing another area of concern. Can they have these snacks as they're walking outside? These are the things that we need to be thinking about creatively. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I'll try for five seconds. Air conditioning. What's the status on air conditioning? I understand multiple high schools and middle schools are having some challenges. Anybody have an answer?
I can tell you that we did have some issues in the first day of opening and prior to that. The ramping up with the, all of our systems go, basically. We were doing dry runs to get things, so we minimized those. We did have chiller problems at Hayfield Secondary. We did have some other issues that we addressed. But everything that we've had has been within tolerance of what we anticipate, and we've been very responsive to each of the situations that we've had. I've been told that they've been addressed and they are working now. But again, you know, I had some power outages while we've been sitting in here in certain parts of the county, and one of them was a power surge. That's been eradicated already. So if you have any particulars, please let me know, and I'll respond directly about more specifics. But yeah, I mean, we have had some, definitely.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. And to my colleagues, please feel free to take a break if you need, but I will not be breaking for this next session. We will go right into it. And this is the next budget, the next item, which is the FY 2021 Final Budget Review. And Dr. Braybrand, you look like you would like to start.
Just to help expedite this for the board, and I'll give it right to Ms. Burden. Last July, we took a break on intercession. You've seen all of this before. Now we've given it just a few little tweaks, a few little places. We've tweaked a little bit of money so that, as you remember at our July meeting, I talked about continuing to collaborate with the county. So that, and we've got for you today, a bonus plan to recognize our employees' work throughout this pandemic for both our full-time employees and hourly. It closely mirrors the county. And Ms. Burden and Mr. Smith and Ms. Wiggington did extraordinary work to make just a few trims, a little haircut, to create enough money to provide this $30 million bonus to employees. We hope that you will see this as collaboration with the county, see this as rewarding our employees. And again, we think it's a huge win, and Ms. Burden can explain exactly where she did the nip and tuck, and that you'll say this is a beautiful bonus opportunity for our employees. So with that said, Mr. Smith, anything before I turn it over to Ms. Burden? Ms. Burden, go for it.
Good afternoon. As you all know, the year-end review offers an opportunity to make revisions to the fiscal 2021.
make revisions to the fiscal '21 budget, final revisions, and provide carryover information for the fiscal '22 approved budget. Once it's approved by the school board, it's forwarded to the county for inclusion in their year end packet. The data is as of June 30th, of course. And as Dr. Braebrand said, I presented the year end information in detail at the last school board meeting on July 15th. So I'm not going to go over all that again today. Basically, I'm just going to concentrate on the adjustments to the original year end item that's being recommended today. The revised board item has the adjustments boxed, so you can easily see what's been changed. Again, as Dr. Braebrand mentioned, the county executive proposed a one-time bonus for county staff in his year end item that was released on July 26. He's proposed $1,000 for all married employees and $500 for non-married employees. Dr. Braebrand's revised year end recommendation now reflects adjustments to fund $1,000 one-time bonus for all FCPS contracted staff members and a $500 one-time bonus for all non-contracted or temporary hourly staff members. Basically, everything on year end is the same. All the totals are the same, except for the repurposing of several categories for the bonus. So on page three, you see that revenue has been adjusted slightly to shift funds from the beginning balance of fiscal '23 to fiscal '22 to be used to fund a portion of the bonus, and the other changes were within the fiscal '22 beginning balance or carryover in section A. We basically have carryover funds of 182.2 million that are for routine items like reserves, encumbrances, or items on purchase orders, schools and department critical needs, multi-year projects, prior commitments, and then identified investments, which now includes the one-time bonus recommendation. And then 20.6 million set aside for fiscal '23 beginning balance and the grand adjustments of 19.1. On page five are the fiscal '22 expenditure revisions. In addition to the 8 million school board flexibility reserve that's routinely included in the year end item, this year, we had originally set forth a $6 million school board initiatives placeholder. The school board, but you should know that the school board flexibility reserve of 8 million was established in 2006 to address unforeseen, unbudgeted needs, but it's rarely accessed and should be more than adequate to address any initiatives that require funding. Thus, the 6 million, the additional amount, has been redirected to fund the bonus. The staffing reserve line item was originally slated to increase by 9.4 million. It was intended to restore 3.3 million of the staffing reserve that we eliminated as part of the fiscal '22 approved budget reconciliation with funding levels. And the additional amount was returning 6.1 million to the staffing reserve that had been used to establish the virtual school program. You may recall that the enhanced summer school programs were funded with the Essar II grant. But since then, you know, we know that the, the demand for summer school was not as great as we had originally anticipated. So we believe we'll be able to seek reimbursement from the Essar II grant for the staffing reserve that was used for the virtual program. So that 6.1 million replenishment of the staffing reserve won't be needed. We have another source to be able to get those funds. We also included a COVID placeholder of 11.3 million in the original year end item to address any future pandemic activities. However, Essar funding from the federal government will be sufficient to fund any one-time costs, as so was stated with students' academic and social emotional needs, as well as facility or health and safety concerns. In fact, the Essar III spending plan that we're going to discuss later today is, will support student needs over the next two to three years. So that 11.3 million in local COVID reserve funds can be redirected to fund the bonus. And then, of course, the revision includes the, the information for the one-time bonus for all FCPS contracted employees at $1,000 and non-contracted for 500. As I'd stated when I was talking about revenue, the beginning balance for fiscal '23 is also reduced in order to be able to afford the bonus. It's going to be 20.6 million instead of the 29.9 originally recommended. In recent years, our beginning balances range from 24 to 25 million. This will bring it down to 20.6. But if savings or increases in revenue are identified during the fiscal '22 quarterly reviews, we could adjust the beginning balance if that was desired. So 9.3 million of the set aside for beginning balance in '23, not the current year, will be redirected to fund the bonus. And then the summary page shows us the net changes, but to just summarize the revisions, the additional school board initiatives reserve of 6 million has been redirected towards the bonus. The post-COVID placeholder of 11.3 has been redirected to support the bonus. The staffing reserve replenishment for virtual will seek reimbursement from Essar II, and that's 6.1 million, and then the beginning balance reduction of 9.3 million for a total of 32.7 million, which is the cost of the bonus.
So these are small trends to what you saw before in July, but with a big present at the end, which is a bonus for our employees who've dealt and continue to deal. We're really now in the second year of our employees at full tilt dealing with the pandemic. Last time, primarily virtual, this time, all in person. And I think it's time for us to do more than the 2%. I know this board wanted to do more than 2% last year. We pushed, we pulled, we tried, and we worked with the county to get some additional revenue to do the 2%. But I think this at year end, again, in collaboration with the county to provide a bonus for a job well done, is, again, our recommendation to this board today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Board member questions, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, followed by Ms. Cohen, and then Mr. Frisch. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Corbett Sanders, excuse me. No, no, you were first. I just got my Karens mixed up.
It's an honor to be mistaken for Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Thank you. Couple of questions. The bonus structure, the way it's written, it says $1,000 bonus for all contracted employees and 500 for hourly employees. Is that all hourly employees? So we have a number of people who work full-time that do not have contracts. How does that work?
No, the $1,000 will go to all FTEs and hourly contracted employees. So your parent liaisons, your bus drivers, your food and nutrition services folks will also be eligible for the $1,000. And the 500 is slated for those who truly are temporary hourly. They're non-contracted. They, they don't have any, you know, particular job rights, employee benefits, those sorts of things. So it's basically $1,000 for all with a very small number of temporary hourly folks that will get the 500.
And is that for all employees that are on our payroll as of now, or including the new hires? Or is it for those employees who were with us throughout the pandemic?
Want to jump in? I think Alice wants to jump in.
So it is for all of our active employees. And, and right now, the recommendation would be to pay that out in November. So they would be, have to be active as when the payout goes, is what the plan is.
Okay. So that means people that retire between now and November would not get the bonus?
So if they are, if, if they are not, so if they give notification, my understanding is if they are retired as of the time that the bonus goes out, they are not picked up in this. If they retire afterwards, so they've given notification of retirement, but their retired date is after the bonus, they would get it.
And then the third aspect is the $1,000 bonus. Is that in addition to the bonus we are about to approve within the Essar funds for bus drivers and bus attendants?
Yeah, that's in addition to that. That's a, the, the bus drivers as a recruitment incentive.
So actually, it would be, I guess one of my questions, and I will be bringing this up in the Essar conversation, is that if you look at neighboring districts, they are giving a more substantial bonus for new hires, and we also have to look at how the result of changing all the pay scales up to $22, how we address the compression in that pay scale.
Yeah, that's going to be discussed in, in the, the next session. But you're correct. The, the one school division I think you're speaking of is offering 3,000, but that is if you have an existing CDL license. And we train, we, we provide the training for that. But this bonus of $1,000 is in addition to the recruitment bonus of $2,000.
So if it's being paid out in November, they'll get $2,000 when they're recruited in September, and a third thousand when they, if they stick with us through November? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's some parameters around the $2,000 as well, because obviously, not only do we want to recruit those folks, but we'd also like to retain them. So I believe that there are some parameters about timing. You, you, you don't sign on the dotted line and we write you a check. You have to stay with us. You have to get the, you have to pass all of the appropriate requirements to get the CDL license. And then I think you get half of it, and then if you stay a certain length of time, which Mr. Plattenberg will know, but I do not, you get the other thousand.
No, I understand that piece. But the question is, he, what you just said to me was $1,000 will be given to all contracted employees in November who are on our payrolls. So if we bring them on, they're on our payroll, we give them a $2,000 bonus, then, because that will, this informs my conversation during the Essar discussion, then they get another $1,000 in November, then that means it is a $3,000 bonus, and it's equivalent with the other districts. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's better. No. Okay.
This, this is a bonus for every employee that we're talking about now. And then later, I know there's some discussion about what to do with our specific bus driver employees that we'll be talking about. But this bonus is $1,000 for almost everyone, and a small number of hourly will get $500. We'll pay it out in November. And part of this is operationalizing it. Like, you got to pick a time to pay out, like in anything, like pay today, pay Monday. We've, we've tried to come up with the very best, and we tried to mirror very closely with the county's.
This is very helpful. It's just, I had a hard time going through the documentation and seeing this level of granularity. So that is why I was asking it. The last question I'll ask about this is, this bonus is consistent with the approach that the county is taking as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen.
Sorry, I just want to drill down that a little bit further. Can you give us some examples of who the hourly employees would be that would get the $500 bonus as opposed to the $1,000?
I cannot, but Mr. McDonald can.
Sure. Some of those folks would include substitute teachers, perhaps dining room assistants, some folks that are, are just hired again on a very temporary basis with no expectation of regular work.
So, you know, you know what I'm going to say before I say it. But, I mean, I would argue that there is no way in the world we could have gotten through last year, and now even more with folks being quarantined. I mean, if we didn't have our substitute teachers, if we, I mean, we would be, you know what. So I just, I, I struggle with the idea that we're going to give them less just because they don't have the protection of a contract. So I think if we're going to do $1,000, do you know how many people we're talking about with this 500? So I think, I mean, that's a conversation, obviously, for everybody to have. But my advocacy would be those people are, were incredibly essential. And I think if we're going to do 1,000, then we, then we eat it and we do 1,000. My other question is, I don't see, we are having conversations now about trying to add monitors back in. Is that something that would be an end of year, or is that more an Essar?
It's a fiscal '22 challenge.
Yeah, I would see it as an Essar-related thing. Obviously, monitors due to the COVID impacts, if we were going to do it there this year end, I, I, I'd see it better at Essar for our Essar discussion this afternoon more than I do for this year end.
Okay. And same with outdoor learning spaces? Does that fit more neatly into Essar than it does end of year?
Yes. And when we get to Essar, we actually have some Essar spending from earlier Essar that we want to update you on as well around where we have allocated money and still have some money left to do some additional spending. And we'll talk about that in our next session.
Okay. I mean, my advocacy, I know I've talked about it for three years, but our substitute teachers, we cut their pay significantly a few years ago. We have struggled to continue to get them. We struggle to bring those retired teachers back as our amazing resources that they've had, and we're going to need them more than ever. And my advocacy would be, let's give them the, the full monty.
Well, we can certainly be prepared if the board or someone makes an amendment to cost out that 3,352, what, what $500 is and what that additional.
It would cost an additional 1.8 million to bring the 500 up to 1,000.
Well, that took 10 seconds for Ms. Burden's incredible, brilliant mind. So honestly, I mean, ultimately, that'll be some discussion or, or formal discussion on Thursday when we bring, or if you have some consensus that develops today, and we would have to make the applicable change to one of the other things, beginning balance or something else on the year end. Thanks.
No more questions? All right. Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. Try a little consensus here and see, is there, could we just show of hands for board members who would be interested in having Ms. Burden explore the ability to round out the bonuses for everybody at $1,000, so that we can know what that might look like beyond the price, where it might come from?
You're saying for every single full-time and part-time person?
For these additional 3,352 employees, temporary hourly. You want to take my turn or no? Okay. Raise hands. Okay. All right. So we know it would be 1.8 million. And the comparison with the county, so our version of the counties is not married versus unmarried, it's contracted versus not?
Not exactly. Merit and non-merit means something different.
But you said merit.
Merit.
I heard married.
Sorry.
No, no, no. Merit. No, no.
We need those LED masks that move the mouth with the, that's good to know. All right. And, and how many of the 3,352, if you have at hand, are substitutes? Even just ballparking?
We have approximately 2,500 substitutes on the.
So it's the bulk of it. I would, I would argue along the lines of what Ms. Cohen said, you know, we've been struggling with our subs for quite a while. And I don't know if we're going to be in a position to fix the way that we're compensating our subs in, in the near term, but this is one way to make it more enticing. That's it. Thanks.
Ms. O'Mash, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I, I wanted to clarify this issue. I think, you know, originally, we were offering, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, but for the full-time contractual employees, the bonus, 500 at the hourly folks. There was some community, you know, concern around that, et cetera. We revisited, we looked at now adding the, the hourly, contract hourly folks, right, to add them to the 1,000. So that's different now than the temporary hourly employees, right? So this is, this adjustment you're sharing with us is a response to that community advocacy, right?
The intention had always been for our bus drivers and food service employees to be at the same level as all of our other employees.
Okay, I guess it was an oversight, right? There was an adjustment made, because this is what the, the community concerned.
I think they're thinking, I think you're.
Or was this the latter?
I think you're thinking about a different thing. That was the recruitment bonus of support employees for summer school versus instructional. This bonus plan, as Mr. Smith said, was always 1,000 bucks. We're talking a very sliver. This is down to the sliver of hourly, temporary people, subs, and a few other positions. We, we've given them something versus nothing, and now there's a debate among board members, do you want to pay just everybody, period? If you're in the Fairfax family, you're in this experience we're in, $1,000. So that's the discussion right now.
So I'm trying to figure consistency here. So for that piece, we are now exploring whether it's possible, right, to potentially adjust, or?
Well, if there's board consensus to want to go back and make another change to year end, to be able to get the 1.8 million to cover those additional 3,000-plus folks from 500 to 1,000.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, which, which employee categories are we going to? Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, which employee categories are we gonna include in the upper, you know?
Yeah, and I think the other was a recruitment strategy for summer school. This is a retention strategy, if you will, to say to our existing employees, thank you for what you're doing, and what you will continue to do this year during the pandemic.
Right, but with a 20% shortage in that, in those employee categories, I think it warrants that piece as well. But, okay, so, so given that that's the case, have, in the allocations that are coming in the future, where do we sit there? Because I, I just want to ensure that we're consistent. We're gonna approve this, and we're gonna say that this is what we're doing?
The ESER money is not around bonuses for other employees. Anything in ESER that we've done prior, you know, we did make changes to our special education teacher contracts. And we're bringing you later today in ESER, some proposals around elevating bus driver pay at those initial steps, with further research into the market scale and potential other updates later this calendar year, but not today. So this is really just separate about the bonus, sort of a retention strategy, similar to what the county is doing. They're doing 1,000, we're doing 1,000. I think just, as I sense it right now, the debate is, for the small number of employees, do you have a $500 because they're temporary hourly? Or do you make it 1,000? Is it important to make a distinction or not? That's for the board to decide, will obviously either leave it as is, or, you know, at board direction, or later a board amendment that says, make this change.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to explore is whether it's retroactively, or, you know, it's possible to use year-end funds to, if you will, correct the oversight before. With the 500 versus 1,000, to the contract hourly.
Are you, oh. The, the, if you're bringing up the issue of summer school recruitment, no, we don't have anything on here around that previous issue that some wanted, there was a $1,000 recruitment bonus for instructional at summer school and a 500. We don't have anything on here that addresses that, if that's the question.
And it's not possible to use year-end monies for that? I mean, it is, right?
I would say anything's possible, but that's not something that we, that's not something that we looked at. I don't know, Mr. Smith, anything else you'd want to add?
No, no, that's not part of the recommendation. As Dr. Brabran said, that we were looking at those differentiations with the bonus structures at that time because of the recruitment piece for our summer school teachers. And so there, there was a very different intention for not just rewarding people for working summer school, but there was clearly a recruitment piece because we can't have summer school for special education students without special education teachers.
No, fair enough. I, I guess I would be interested in seeing if that could be explored. I know, Dr. Brabran, we spoke last week about trying to see if that could be corrected. I know a number of my colleagues have heard quite a bit of advocacy around this. It's coming, it's coming down the pipeline, people are organizing their petition with hundreds of people. I mean, are we gonna consider addressing that here or not? Because I can't see us justifying it through ESER funds, given the purpose of those.
I think you're talking about the prior summer school incentive bonuses. We, we did hear some feedback about that. And we've, we, we certainly took that, but we don't have a plan to, based on that feedback, to present different money from what we paid to recruit for summer school. We were able to do summer school at seven times the size. Our biggest need at the time were instructional, we had a little bit of a higher bonus. Some people didn't like that. And, and listen, I mean, that's what we're, every day right now, we're in the piece of making decisions, some like, some don't. We stand by what we did for summer school, we think we did a good thing. We didn't bring a recommendation to address that difference. We said, we'll keep that in mind in the future when we do future summer schools. And we have an ESER block later today for next year's summer school, but we haven't divvied it up. So that's something we could look at addressing next year, to having the same amount for any summer school recruitment. We certainly could consider that.
Okay, I'd be curious to hear my colleagues' thoughts as to what they think around allocating any of these monies towards that retroactively, but I do appreciate that we can look at it, you know, forward-thinking as well. And Mr. Smith, your explanation was helpful, I saw the rationale there. The other piece was just, how much of the instructional resources money, I mean, 12, 12 millions, quite a bit, is allocated specifically for textbooks? Is it the, I mean, I know the basal materials are not necessarily the same.
Yes, so we don't know, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have the breakdown between what is digital versus basal versus resources. So when we talk about instructional resources, it's for all of those products. So it's $12 million that we would have, a little over $12 million that we had annually in our budget. And as part of the FY '22 approved budget, we eliminated that to balance it, and we made a notation that with year-end funding, we wanted to recommend restoring that back because we knew we would need those resources in the future.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, because I know the question, the topic of textbooks has come up quite a bit in our school board conversations. I mean, $12 million for a paperweight that's gonna sit in the class? Something to think about, seriously, this is a lot of money. I, I've said this since the first work session I've been in on this board. I think we want to look more deeply into that, which brings me to my broadest question, and I'll end with this. I mean, how do we end up deciding this? What I'm looking at is total funds available, 82 million, right? I could be misunderstanding this, but Ms. Burden, please, correct me if I'm wrong. And we're just gonna say, okay, we're moving forward, this is the plan, we're gonna vote on this. I have a hard time looking at this kind of number and just, just going with it? 12 million to something that I don't even think was worth it?
Thank you, Ms. Omech. Just, just for clarity, any board member, we will be voting on this on Thursday, and any board member can bring about an amendment to our suggestion for changes. I would encourage you all to reach out to your colleagues if you are thinking about that between now and Thursday, and I know it's only two days, but...
One day, there's no discussion, we don't know where folks are at?
Well, we'll do the best that we can by calling each other and sharing and, you know, send an email out, but we can't reply all, as we know, and then we'll, we'll do it that way. But that's unfortunately where we are at this point in time. So I am going to move on and go to Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, I appreciate, first of all, what Mr. Frisch was proposing. My, my discomfort is the fact that we have heard from a lot of our employees who worked full-time, well beyond 40 hours a week, how grueling it was to work through the pandemic. And so when we would turn around and say, you get a bonus of $1,000, regardless of you worked 60-hour weeks, 70-hour weeks, versus you were a temporary employee, that's how I have heard it. So that is where my concern rests. I also understand that we are trying very hard to stay to the one Fairfax approach. If you work for the county or you work for the schools, how do we approach showing appreciation and retention to employees? And to my knowledge, the county government is not giving the same bonus to someone if you're a temporary employee versus you're a full-time employee. So that's, that's where I'm wrestling with this, but appreciate the concern and consideration that Mr. Frisch is bringing up. Secondly, I have discomfort about the 1.8 million for FNS, the Food Nutritional Services Fund. That's supposed to be a self-sustaining fund. As I read through the report, it appears they have about a $6 million reserve. And I had asked, back when we gave $10 million to a self-sustaining fund, to get the analysis of why Prince William and Loudon did not lose all of their reserves, why were we doing this kind of bailout? I don't recall seeing that analysis come through on why Loudon and Prince William weren't faced with the bailout problem that we had. So I, I'm gonna echo what Ms. Omech said. Turning around and voting on this in two days doesn't make me very comfortable at all. In fact, I'm quite unhappy about it. And I, I will talk offline with the superintendent, the chair and vice chair of the budget, because I think there's some decisions here that are troubling. I would also like clarity on the board getting notification about a $325,000 consulting contract with ERS. Is that in here, Ms. Burden, or where are we supposed to be paying for that?
Yes, it's in here, it's, it's one of the items under department carryover.
So I, I'm just gonna be very blunt with you colleagues. I sent you all text messages during the recess. Finding out about a $325,000 consulting contract, and then a memo that blamed the board for that kind of expenditure on a report or an analysis or anything that they want to tell us on how to better utilize social workers, psychologists and school nurses, is entirely unacceptable. The board never asked the superintendent and his team to go spend $325,000 in that manner. That is something that we have an office of research to get that information to us. I don't feel like that's transparent at all, that it's not even listed here in any way for the public or the board to understand what's buried in here. And these are the things that if we can't spend $325,000 well, then how are we supposed to trust the billions that we're spending? And I, I look at this report, and it is, it's really a listing out again with a few summary sentences. But, I mean, Dr. Brabran, I really appreciate you made yourself available, we talked about it.
McLaughlin.
And my time is up, so I would like to hear from Dr. Brabran, why is that not here when you know how important this was to several of us?
Well, super quick, one, we did do the thing on the FNS analysis, and I'll have to find where it is. We did do an extensive budget answer on the different reserve amounts for each school system. We can put that back out to the board. I don't remember when it was, but I know we did it, and so I'll go back. The contract, I mean, obviously, that's something I know you had advocacy about. There was a follow-on motion to look at staffing. It needed to be done in a tight period of time, and with everything else, we're swamped. I'm, I'm not gonna lie, we're swamped. If you think that's not as high a priority to spend it on, we can, we can, we cannot move forward with that contract. But we were trying to meet timelines and the follow-ons. As you know, the Audit Committee had done a full audit of me saying that my team isn't getting follow-on stuff done on time. So we're trying to do multiple things and balance them well, and in the end, the board will make a decision whether that contract is something they want to move forward to. So I certainly respect your point of view.
I do just want to ask a question. Dr. Brabran and, and Ms. Burden, do we have flexibility if we had to move this off the agenda for Thursday?
Yes and no. I mean, it, it, it goes in the county's package, so we're, you know, we try to get that to them. But, you know, things that are in the year-end package, if they are not approved, then, I mean, they've already been waiting because there are, normally, this is brought to the board mid-July, that's the first look, and then there's a work session, and then it's, in past years, I think it was approved on July 23rd. So because the, the change in the schedule, it got moved to August for approval. And so some of the funds that, you know, that people have requested that as department carryover or school carryover, in some instances, they're waiting for this approval to be able to move forward with whatever their project is. So to, not, so in addition to, you know, the, the county typically receives this at the end of July from us, and we're a month later than that. In addition to that, the department heads and principals would also be delayed.
Thank you.
Mr. Nekofax, may I say something as budget chair? Thank you. To be clear, the only piece of information that is new today from July 15th is about the bonuses. Everything else was, it is true, excuse me. I'd like to take the tenor of this conversation down a bit. We've all had this information. There's also been questions about contracting that Mr. Frisch has tried to bring from governance. We're running a half an hour behind schedule. Let's take accountability for how we're showing up to this conversation and the questions that we're asking, and what we're being asked to do, so we can approve these funds that are necessary. We did move it back a whole month. So, Mr. Nekofax, what can we do at this point, knowing that we're running late and that this piece of information is one piece new in year end, and that the plan is to put this up for about on Thursday?
I think at this point, I need to go through the first round of questions, and then we can break and we can decide whether or not we want to go straight into ESER funds, or if we have very extreme questions that we have to ask. And I think I will confer with the chair of the school board, as well as the vice chair, and, and just listen to all of you to see where you are on this, and really then talk to staff further to see if, if, if they're very uncomfortable with this. I think the vote is gonna have to take place. But at this point, what I want to do is, I just want to continue, I just have two more people who have first-round questions, and then I would like to break for lunch, because I think it's the right time. So, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Oh, yes, you were, Dr. Anderson. I already put a check mark by your name, because I was gonna call you, and then we had all these interim conversations. Go ahead.
No worries, because you had mentioned my name after hers, so I remembered.
Yes.
Couple of things, and I'm glad that you shared this, Ms. Maran, because that was one of my questions. The only change of this versus what we received in July is pretty much Section B, because there's been a change in the beginning balance because of the bonuses that have now been added. So the bonuses, just to confirm, it's $1,000 for all contracted employees, parent liaisons, cafeteria, bus drivers, et cetera. And it's 500 for temporary workers. People who may work two hours a week, up to, up to 39 hours a week. I share very much the discomfort that Ms. McLaughlin talked about regarding how we evaluate our temporary employees versus the folks who've been working just pretty much 40, 50, 60 hours a week, every single week. I, I, I hate to be in the space where I'm evaluating which did more, because we all know we need all of those positions in order to move this whole operation forward. But I don't see a space where I can be in support of this right now for our temporary employees. So I do like this recommendation as it's been provided, so I will be able to support that. Secondarily, going to what Ms. Omech was talking about, ESY. I know this is not represented here in any way. And again, we're in this space where you've said, Mr. Smith, without the teachers, there would have been no summer school. We could have had 1,000 drivers, but we would not have had summer schools without the teachers. I appreciate that. Still haven't said that. The bus driver situation has been one that's been really, really rough for this year. So I would like to have an evaluation of how much it would cost to raise the bus driver summer incentive from the 500 to $1,000 to match the teachers. Because we're talking about a subset of our drivers, only the folks who work during the summer, yes? It's not every single person in the division who is a bus driver.
To clarify, the, the additional bonus went for all employees who worked during that summer school cycle. So it just wasn't a separate carve-out for bus drivers, so we had...
The ESY? I'm talking about the ESY bonus of recruitment.
For summer school, there was a recruitment bonus for teachers, and then we provided additional dollars for all employees who worked during the ESY period, the summer school period.
Right, so teachers receive $1,000 for summer school, and bus drivers receive, or other employees receive 500, is that correct? So what I'm asking is, how much would it cost us to elevate those other employees who receive $500 to match the 1,000 that was provided to the teachers? Meaning, an additional 500. How much would that cost us? About $800,000. Okay, $800,000. I would be in support of that, and I'm happy to join you for us to, to provide an amendment, for me to get the pulse of our colleagues around that. I know that's past work, past money, but I would like to investigate that. So I want to put that as a next step question, whatever I need to do there. That $800,000, Ms. Burden, that would come out of beginning balance? Is that what, that would decrease it? Stop my time, I have one more question, you have to stop my time. I'm watching it just tick away.
I mean, it could come out of year end, and we would reduce beginning balance further. But, you know, we originally funded the summer school stipends for teachers and, and bus drivers and food services out of ESER II. And as I've said previously, our summer school program was not as robust as we originally planned. We don't know the total cost yet of summer school, but we, we will within the next 30 days or so. And at that point, we'll have to amend the ESER II application. And there, there may be funds available there to, to, to do what you're suggesting, if a majority of the board supports that. Instead of taking it out of year end, I mean, that's, it would make sense to use the, if the, the board has consensus around that, to use the funds that we originally used for the others, which was the ESER II grant.
And that would be what I would want to support. I don't think we need to whittle down the beginning balance anymore. I'm very glad that we were able to replenish that, because last year was rough because of what we needed to do for nutrition services. So I'm concerned about going down less than 20 million, when we had, what, 20, almost 24? Just a... So I'm concerned about going down less than 20 million, when we had, what, 20, almost 24, just six weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you. I feel like I do need to support my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, in mentioning the contract issue for the 325,000 contract. Dr. Brabran, I think the concern is that that was not brought to the board. Is that correct? And at what amount should the board hear about contracts?
I don't know, Ms. Burden. I'm not the expert on contracts. I assume you and your staff follow all rules and policies of FCPS as we continue to work with this board collaboratively. So please, at 3:25, what kind of contract? Is it notification or approval? I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, it require, anything over 100,000 that is consulting services requires school board notification. And that is what, that was the genesis of the conversation among school board members of the contract for the staffing standards review, was the notification that came out in a Brabran briefing of, that we were awarding a contract to ERS to do this piece of work.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that that is the genesis of the concern. A Brabran briefing is an announcement, not seeking approval. So I do think that that's a legitimate concern and certainly falls within our fiduciary duty. With respect to the 300 or so employ, oh, sorry. The 300 or so employees that we were thinking of, we were discussing, Mr. Frisch mentioned, and Ms. Laura Jane Cohen. Can, I'd like to ask Mr. McDonald to give us a little bit more information, if you could, about who we're talking about, how much time they would have worked, how that could play out so that we can know what we're talking about. Oh, okay. Well, you can clarify the number, too.
Sure, sure. So it's 3,352 employees that fit into that category. And so, as I mentioned earlier, substitute teachers would be one group of employees that would fall in that group. Centrally-funded hourly folks, so for instance, I have some folks that come in during the summer that help with some of the hiring. Those individuals would fit into that bucket, and we have those types of situations happening across our central office staff. Coaches, our dining room assistants, or some other examples of individuals that would fit into that group. As I mentioned earlier, we have approximately 2,500 substitute teachers. So that makes up a little more than 2/3 of the individuals, if I'm doing the math quickly in my head correctly, on that list. But ultimately, each of those individuals works a varying number of hours. And so, we could be talking about a substitute that worked one day over the course of the fall or, you know, an individual that's working a little more regularly. The difference is with this group, there is not an expectation necessarily of daily work that's going to be performed in a routine manner with the division. There isn't a contract that exists with those individuals. And so, again, there's a high degree of variability within that group in terms of hours and roles.
So, does that mean that there would be no expectation going? Because I'd like to invest in folks who are looking to support us in the future. And are you saying that that group does or does not fall in that category? I keep scooting back. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, so we could have someone that would work a day or two in the subpool and then perhaps step away for an extended period of time that would fall into this group. So, we would run that risk.
Okay. So I would just like to, you know, if we can, if we want to continue to talk about that, I'd like to make sure, I'd like to have the goal of incentivizing people to continue to support us in any way that we can. And if maybe you can help us with a proposal that would do that, perhaps that's one thing, one consideration. I have the same approach with respect to Dr. Anderson's recommendation with respect to the summer employees. There may have been, I'm not sure who those people are. But again, I'd like to focus on who's committing to working for us, to supporting us. And then we provide some sort of incentive for that. So, that would just be a bright line test for me personally. Thank you.
McDonald.
Sure. And I just wanted to add one thing on. I recognize the board and the community's concern around the level of engagement of our substitutes. And so, we recognize the critical role that they play in maintaining or providing for continuity of instruction for our students. So we are continuing to look at ways that we might be able to provide incentives for those individuals. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to present an additional plan related to, you know, working with that particular group.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I see everyone with their name up has already had a turn. So, I am going to say I'm not going to close this work session out just yet. If people feel like you would like to have one additional go-back, we can do that. We can confer about that as we go on to our lunch break because it's very important that we do have the time available for the ESER funds talk. And I have several people, including Ms. Maron and Dr. Anderson, and probably others who have to go and pick up, you know, they have, I don't know what their, the reason, but they need to leave by 3:30 or 3:45 at the latest. So, I want to have the majority of the board members here. So now, let's break for lunch and convene 30 minutes later at 2:10.